All right, why is everything so quiet? There we go.
I'm good.
Yeah, I hit the, hit the wrong button. Sorry about that, everyone. Well, good evening, everybody out in Frankfurt and surrounding areas. This is Frankfurt today. We're proud to have City Commissioner Patricia Walderidge on tonight, and we're going to cover a lot of topics, a lot of, a lot of things that people have been asking. If you have any questions while we're live, feel free to ask. If Patricia is allowed or can speak about subjects, she will. She's agreed that she will answer any questions that, that is within her ability to answer. We'll leave it at that. Sometimes you, you can't always answer questions, and it's not avoidance. It's just, there are other things going on in the background, or reasons that they cannot be answered. So Craig.
Sierra Little Buffalo, me and Eric always talking about the Buffalos and with all the art projects downtown. We want to see the Buffalo. We push the Buffalo a lot. That's why Buffalo is our logo. And I sent one of the commissioners a message and said, instead of these benches downtown, why don't we put little Buffalos and let everybody sit on them? He sent me back a snarky response that I cannot enunciate.
I can only imagine.
So Patricia, to write your commissioner, it's okay to call you Patricia, correct?
Yes, please, yes.
Okay. We usually do a breaking news segment at the end. We try to get everybody to give us some breaking news. But I want to move it to the front this time. So is there any breaking news? Pull the microphone a little bit closer.
Yeah, pull up very nice and close to you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Is there any news that you would like to tell our viewers and all of the city of Frankfurt residents today?
Any news, breaking news?
Like I'm hearing rumors.
There's all kinds of rumors out there.
Yeah, we've heard a lot of rumors.
No official.
I don't like rumors, so.
But I've not seen, yeah, I've not seen anything.
Nothing official from your camp yet, so.
Okay, well, I guess that's, that's the lead that, yes, I am going to run for mayor in 2024.
Well, congratulations.
Yes, so my rumors are true. I'm just taking my time and getting my team together. I'm taking my time to get my team together and really just worried and trying to concentrate on things right now in the city that are moving forward. We have so many things going on.
Lots.
So I have to make sure that I'm upholding my job and my responsibility that the voters and the residents have elected me to do a city commissioner. So I've been focusing on a lot of that. But yes, that is my duty. I feel that it's time and I think I'd be a great mayor. And I would not want to throw my hat, my name in the hat if I did not think that I could do a great job for Frankfurt. And I think I've been transparent. I have been a great leader. I've been consistent. I look out for the staff. I look out for our budget and our dollars. And I love the economic development portion, look out for our local businesses. So I think I'd be a great person to step up to the plate.
And how many terms have you been commissioner?
This is my third term, so I'm in my fifth year. In the first four years, I was mayor pro temp.
Right, yeah, two terms as mayor protein.
That is correct.
Right, so that's a good honor. It's, you know, the voter showing confidence in you right there. Eric, you got the next one?
Yeah, well, I'm glad that you mentioned up, mentioned budgets and dollars and stuff like that. Currently, a question that we've been hit with a lot is we have a, have a city manager and an assistant city manager, which seems like an overlapping position. They're both being paid as though they're a city, city manager at approximately $130,000 or there about. Why, why did, why did the commission make that decision?
Sorry, I'm getting over a cold.
This is not no professional thing. If you gotta clear your throat, if you gotta cough, if you gotta,
I'm getting over a cold.
If a cuss word slips out, you know, it just, it just does. This is very relaxed, very relaxed.
Okay, so.
We're not Joe Rogan yet.
No, that's okay, that's okay. I can, I understand, and I completely understand with those that had issues with that because it is such a large salary. But I, I look at it in, and this may end up going to another question that you have. But in regards to this, in our closed session meeting was something that I said, if we have taken the mayor form of government off the table, right? Which would be a different avenue for our residents to be able to, you know, vote on if they wanted us to change over to a mayoral form of government. And we've taken that off the table. So since that's off the table, I felt like going into these interviews, why do we need to hire one city manager to do the same thing again? And so when you're leading into one person having 13 reports, having all of these things, projects, and we have a ton of projects going on, there's really something that's going to slide through. Why not do something different? Yes, it does cost us a bit more. However, in this situation, when I brought up these two in our closed session meeting to say, hey, maybe we should look in hiring two people, these two individuals. One, Jason Monroe has done an excellent job in serving as the interim city manager with our staff. I have not heard so, I mean, it's just so many accolades that people have just said, oh, he's just amazing, keeping things going. He has a great attitude. And I think that that brings a lot of good morale and keeps our morale high in the city. And then the new guy, Andrew, Andrew comes from Georgetown. And so we see all the things that's happened over the last few years of Georgetown, and Andrew's been a part of that. And Andrew also has a legal background as well.
He's an attorney?
Yes, yes. So he's, he's been an attorney. He still is able to serve as an attorney as well. And so one thing that we were looking into, and actually had this conversation with Kyle, he was my one person. And that conversation was, why not? This could really help us with Andrew and some of our legal issues as well. So we do look at it as though it's a salary of 130,000 a year. But having his legal experience as well is really going to save us on some of our legal fees also moving forward. They, it won't take them all away, but it will save us money on the front end also with some of his legal experience. I feel these two will split responsibilities. I see Jason be more of the administrator, the more face of Frankfurt, and being that person and keeping us moving forward. And I see Andrew more of that, let's do things that he has already done per se in Georgetown. He is a huge component of the one-stop shop that I've spoken on several times, and we just can't get it moving, it seems like. Well, Andrew has done that in Georgetown. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We have someone that can really come in and show us that direction and be able to do that. As well as he's, he was almost responsible for about 70 million dollars coming into Georgetown. So when I look at Andrew, that could be a possibility of bringing money in, keeping projects moving in the right direction, and actually just taking a step back saying, oh, we have a lot going on, right? Let's see what we need to knock off now and then build later and do all of these things. And I feel like Andrew working with Jason is just going to be a great team for our city. And since we have taken the mayor form of government off, it puts us in a different direction, a different light in the next coming years for economic development and being able to be in a positive place with two people working together for the betterment of Frankfurt and our staff and residents.
It makes sense. He'll be able to, like, it seems a lot of times when there's lawsuits in the city, we always hire a $250, $450 attorney, but we got a city attorney. And will, will he be able to help offset some of those costs? Because he's a practicing attorney now, right?
Where I was going to go with that, let me play off of Craig, Craig there a little bit, is, do we have to have a city attorney? Could that be a dual role as assistant city manager and attorney? So moving forward, that secondary person, part of the requirement of that would be a legal background?
So we need a full-time attorney on. I mean, with all of the contracts that we have and all of the meetings that we have, we truly need a, a full-time attorney. And Laura is that person. That's a contractual, that's attorneys talking of HR. Everyone, as you know, doctors and attorneys, they have their own niche, right? So you have your contract, you have your family law and all of these things. There are certain laws that don't follow, or maybe we need to make sure that we have the best person serving us at that time. So Laura will say, look, we're going to need to bring in someone. And then that's when we bring in someone. But as far as that, Laura covers a lot, and she lets us know what we need to know and pushes us in the right direction. There's just sometimes there's a lot going on with contracts and a lot going on when some cases continue to go on and on and on as, as court and legal stuff does, so.
Make sure your part gets covered to your.
And Andrew's main responsibility will not be law. It will just be, he will be there to help us out when we do need that. And also looking over contracts too, when, if Laura needs someone to, you know, take a look.
He's got an economic background with Georgetown, is what Kyle Thompson told me, that.
Yes.
He'll be, you know, you mentioned that 70 million dollars, and he, hopefully he'll be able to bring that expertise in.
I'm hoping so.
Because downtown's booming. We'll get to that in a little while, but. Want to carry off of the mayor form of government.
Sure.
I thought it was a done deal. I thought it was, it'll be a five to zero vote. And I was watching the commission meeting, I think I told Eric, I said, watch this, we're gonna, after having 12 city managers in 17 years, what's that, a year and three months each? It takes them a year to even get to know another way around Frankfurt. And so I thought after, what a great time to change the form of government since we've had it for 50 or 60 years. We mow, we mow through city managers like McDonald's does burgers. I mean, you know, it's just, it's.
Or ice cream machines.
Yeah, yeah, or ice cream machines. It's just amazing how, you know, we get good ones. We've had some good ones. We've chased them off for one reason or another.
Yes.
And so I thought, you know, in talking with some of you all and just asking questions around town, I thought it was time for a change. I personally thought it was a time for change. I thought you all thought it was a time for change. And then up in the last minute, it goes from five to zero to three to two against. I don't understand. I, I mean, I still don't understand. People still ask me about it. I'd still ask other people about it. You know, something, if you, if you're playing baseball and you do something that causes you to lose 12 out of 17 times, you're getting a new manager. You know, it's happening. And in business, if your CEO fails 12 out of 17 times, you're hiring a new CEO.
Correct.
Well, you know, that's why, you know, put the mayor in, reduce another layer of red tape, and let the mayor make, make it a full-time job, let him make the decisions, pay him correctly, 175 grand or whatever, and run the town like it ought to be run. You got any input you want to say on it?
Well, I would probably say, you know, I'd agree with you. I really thought that the commission as a whole, when we left and, and we were discussing it, that we would come back with a five-zero vote. We, in that vote, that does not mean we're changing the government.
Right.
To a mayor form of government, we're giving an option.
To put it on the ballot.
Let me qualify. Yeah, let me qualify. I forgot. That's correct. I forgot. This would, this vote, this five-to-zero vote that I thought was going to occur, would put it on the ballot so the citizens could decide what type of government they wanted.
Correct.
And so, again, I thought this would be an easy thing. If it fails, like mergers failed three times.
Yeah.
Big deal, move on.
Definitely.
But we didn't even get, well.
The citizens didn't get the opportunity to.
Didn't get the opportunity to say how we're going to be governed, so.
And it was so late in, in the election cycle that it was logistically impossible to, to get a.
The, the signatures.
The signatures to pull that off.
Yeah.
Alright, sorry for.
No, that's okay. So yes, so myself, I can speak on myself, and I'm speaking not on behalf of the commission, but on myself and my opinions and my thoughts. In this, going into it, I really did think it was going to be a five-zero vote to place it on the ballot. That's all we're doing, placing it on the ballot. Now, each of us have a vote when we go into the ballot, and we have a right to vote for it or not vote for it at that time. And that's where we come in, and you vote for it. And you can say you voted for it or not. But putting it on the ballot allows our residents to, number one, we could have given them more information on both forms of government. Like you said, it was a perfect time to entertain it. And it was our duties to let them know upfront, which we had something set up. At the time, the mayor said, well, we can bring in KLC and let KLC let us know the difference between mayor form of government and, and vice versa. And next thing you know, I just, I was in the middle of a meeting, I'm like, this isn't going through, wow. And, and like you and I, we all hear the rumors, we hear everything and anything, right? And, you know, I think one thing that the mayor sort of stuck with was, he continued to say, well, I just don't think it's the right time. And then he also shared that he didn't feel that he wanted to put it forward at that time because he didn't want people to think that he was, he or anyone on our city commission was looking to do this because we were running for office.
Well, when's the right time then?
Well, that's it. I, I think that that's just something, just, it's fluff for people like you guys and the residents to read through. It, that had nothing to do, we were not approving anything to say that, oh, I'm doing it because Patricia is going to run for mayor. I, people have known I'm going to run for Ali for a year and a half, two years. So no, it was about, it was about getting it on the ballot for the community to vote for it. Whether I voted for it or not, that was my time to vote when it came up on the ballot.
Let's give us an opportunity to vote for it.
So I felt like at that time, you know, he said that it's not, but I really thought it was a very selfish thing for him and the other two commissioners to really vote on at the time.
And here, and I'm going to say something very controversial, almost abrasive. No, you can't force that upon the citizens, but you can, and, and I mean this as a commission, I'm not pointing this at you.
No, sure.
But you can prevent it if you've got interest elsewhere, that moving to that could hurt your political aspirations. Because, you know, if you're a full-time mayor, whoever it is, it limits your personal life because now you have a full-time responsibility, whereas in the form of government now, you can still be mayor or commission, commissioner, and your personal life doesn't change.
Yeah, you're, you're.
So you can, you can stop it.
They've got to have another job to live.
Yes.
But live 175,000 in Frankfurt at the darn good salary.
Yes.
You can easily live in Frankfurt on 175,000.
I don't think you'd worry about dinner. I think, I think you would eat.
Yeah.
At Da Vinci's.
Yes, and, and I think, you know, I think it, I think it's something that we should have taken in consideration, but now that we have the two city managers, I think moving forward, that gives us something to look at a little differently. You know, it's been said that the mayor has shared that, you know, maybe we can entertain this next year. I don't know what would be the difference in between now and next year, except for he either knows he's going to be serving another four years, or I'll be serving for another four years, or whoever wants to put their name in the hat that will win mayor. But I don't think that it was self-serving. The rules are, the commission itself has to put it on the ballot for the residents to make the decision, or a person, a resident can also get 2,600 signatures to also do that. So I felt like when we took that off of the plate, that was saying, now, well, if you want it, go, go, go do the unexpected, right? Who's going to get 2,600 signatures?
Seven or eight days.
When sometimes 2,600 people don't even vote in our city elections when you really look at it, right? Like, how do you do that? And so to me, I think the mayor started dragging his feet on talking about it. And then when we got to the last minute, I mean, there was literally eight days after that vote, no one can get 2,600 signatures. So to me, that was a selfish move, and I felt like it then took it off of the plate from the residents to be able to make that vote once again. We serve for you guys and for you guys to make those decisions, and we took it off the plate and made it harder for you as a residents if you wanted that.
Well, if, if I remember correctly, two of the three no votes didn't even explain their vote, they just said it and moved on. I mean, it.
Does that surprise you? That's like 90% of our votes.
Not really, but I just.
Okay, alright. I was just like, are you really going to answer for that?
If you're, if you're elected, if you're elected, because I watch the fiscal court meetings too. All six of them explained almost every vote.
Right.
Yes.
They are heavily involved. All of them asked questions. The new ones especially asked questions. And if you're going to make a vote that, that could or could not affect the city, you would think they would at least give some kind of reason why they did good.
It, it, it make, it alters the course in a big way.
Yeah.
And, and I agree. I mean, you should at least have, you know, a parent, you know, a sentence to say about why suddenly last minute in the 11th hour, you go from yes to no.
Right, very true.
And, you know, I'm pretty hard on a lot of the elected officials. And I think people need to pay attention to who, who comes to the meeting prepared. Who comes to the meeting with knowledge and information and research? And I think that you and Kyle both do that very well.
Thank you.
And, and I like, I like it when, when you guys work together, and sometimes, you know, you guys don't always agree, but.
That is correct.
But you both have great reasoning and logic as to why you agree or don't agree.
And explanations.
You don't just say, you, you all just don't agree or don't disagree just to disagree.
Right.
Like, you have some passionate reason, he does, and, and I think that's good, and I think we need, we need that kind of leadership.
Yeah.
And one of the new magistrates, the last two meetings, he wants to get the information earlier. He said it again at the last meeting the other day, he says, I need to get this information earlier so I can do some research.
I said that in our last meeting, the meeting before last.
I thought so, yeah.
I'd ask the mayor, I said, you know, it seems like we get a lot of things on Friday evening at 5 o'clock when Sherma sends out everything, and Sherma sends out when everyone agrees on that. And I said, you know, I think that we should receive the things that are going to be on the agenda before so we can have more time to go over them because we're going into the weekend. And we have, you know, for myself, my kid has travel soccer, and we're on the road doing this, you know. So how much time do I really have in Friday night, Saturday, Sunday? And, you know, we have events around the community to, you know, attend and to really get into that. So to me, it's, sometimes it may be hard to make a decision as to why some of us say, hey, can we table this? Well, we may not have the table if we'd gotten all of our information on Wednesday in regards to this, and things aren't put on at the last.
Right, now I want to emphasize, not make a decision, but make an informed decision, which is what, what you guys tried, you know, what you, what all of you should be doing.
Yes.
And, you know, to, to give somebody something last minute like that.
Yeah.
It's, it's really not good. I mean, Friday, a week and two days before a commission meeting, maybe. You know, that way you get an entire week plus a week.
Would that be possible? That, with all the stuff y'all got going on, because would it be possible to get all that information a week ahead of time?
I think for some of the bigger items, I, I do think so, that we really need to look in, like you said, to be informed in our decisions. I think that we really could, and bless Sherma's heart, Sherma Maxwell, she tries really, really hard to get it out. There's a lot of things going on, and, you know, she's not able to hit that button until, you know, the mayor and everyone sends everything and says, this is it, and then it goes out on Friday. So we get, you know, a rough draft on Wednesday for us to look over, and we get asked for things to be added or what have you. But we have to have three people that want it on there in order for us as a commissioner to get it on the agenda. So that's why sometimes when, I think Kyle speaks of it a lot, that things don't get put on the agenda. If it doesn't interest the mayor, then in three people known, and a lot of times Kyle has me in his, like, hey, yeah, put it on the agenda, and if he doesn't get one more vote, it doesn't go on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, okay. It's just a discussion, yeah, yeah.
Right. And, and you know, and that's where, where the city commission working together, the entire board of commission, you know, there's, there's five voting members, a lot of people forget that, mayor is part of this.
Yes, he is.
And, you know, when it comes to voting, all five of you are equal.
Yes.
And, and that, that's why people need to realize that, and it's important who you put in each one of those positions in our form of government the way it is today.
Yes.
You know, now if we ever switch to a strong mayor form, things change up a little bit. But, yeah, it's important to have people, you know, to, that work together because if you don't agree with something, but you need that third vote to put it on an agenda, you need someone to say, okay, you covered me on this last thing that you didn't really care about.
Right.
I'll get your stuff on the agenda this time.
Yeah, didn't care one way or another.
Right.
Right. And, and really, it shouldn't even take that. It should, if there's a commission that wants something on the agenda, put it on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda.
You know, unless it's a really, really long agenda, or there's some major things on it. To me, we should be able to put things on the agenda just as the mayor. And I just don't foresee that having three people agree, you know, I mean, I guess if it's every single week or something, but maybe allow the time, you know, this, this day, Patricia and Kyle can have something on the agenda. The next week, Kelly and Lisa can put a couple of things on the agenda. But to me, having, and we spoke about that when we came in this time from the May administration. Because Bill May and that administration that I was on actually changed the ordinance for the agenda right before they left out of office, which I asked for them not to change because they weren't going to, you know, more than likely be, they weren't going to be in office, so why change it? So then when the, the commission came in, I asked for them to change it back for the city manager to have a little bit more leeway versus the mayor. And it made sense, but this mayor was just like, no, we'll just keep it there. And of course, he had his votes, but I didn't agree with it because we get in the situation that we are, and it's really hard to get things on the agenda.
Right, right.
Yeah.
This is going to be a good one.
This is going to be, this, this next question is going to be good. It seems like I drew the short straw of asking all the controversial questions.
You said, hey, I'm just, I'm, you know, you said you wanted, that I was hogging all the stuffs, which I was.
He was.
I don't mind. I don't think there is a hard question, guys, so just bring it on.
He always asks all the, the good meaty questions.
I'm sharing the wealth.
So, so something that's been very public and very, a very hot topic is parcels B and C.
Okay.
And we can, you know, it's arguably the most valuable piece of property in Frankfurt.
I would agree.
Available.
Available property. And then suddenly, last minute, you know, it was 2017, it was up for bid. Suddenly, last minute, somebody got it for $1,000. And at the time that that was, that bid was open, part of the agreement was thou shall build a parking garage. And that was part of the agreement. Do you have any comments, not questions, but comments or anything that you would like to say about that?
Yeah, so parcels B and C, you know, I was there on the other commission, which was at the beginning of all of this. And parcels, when they knocked down the civic center, I felt like overnight, right?
It was.
I felt like it was like literally overnight, and I, maybe we didn't fight hard enough for it, I'm not sure. But I wasn't on the commission at that time. But once that happened, the piece of property, then we were in the Bevin administration. And so at that time, Bevin then put that piece of property over on the table for the city saying, hey, what do you want to do with it? But just know, whatever you do with it, you have to build this parking garage. Because the state messed up the parking for the Capitol Plaza. So with that piece of property, though it's great property, it does come with like a $10 million price tag of building something that is not bringing any income in.
Which is why people like me couldn't, couldn't put a bid in.
Correct.
I mean, because, you know, I put $1,100 bid, I'll own the most valuable property in Frankfurt for $1,100.
Definitely.
So, so I might have missed it, because I was, I was typing there to ask people that they got a question to ask. When the bid was won by the person for, from Hazard.
Well, let's go back before then.
Well, I want to ask about whose responsibility was it in the beginning to build the parking garage? I know.
It's the state's responsibility. It was the state's responsibility from day one.
It never was the city's responsibility.
It was never the city's responsibility. However, when you look at it as a, as a city responsibility, it's who is really going to buy that piece of property and build a $10 million parking garage?
But wasn't it?
So when that becomes an issue, we're like, well, we're going to have to figure out how we can get this built because we do need stuff on this piece of property that's going to bring in tax money, it's going to bring in different things. So that, that was, that was within itself. But when this piece of property came on the table, it was when Bill May was mayor and Houston Wells was judge at the time. And so we have both of those sitting at a table, and strategic people at the table, like KC, DC, Terry, tourism, several different people was at the table. And I remember asking, I came and sat at this table, and, and one thing that I asked, they were just arguing about this piece of property. And it was almost like the state was giving it to us, we would just have to figure out the parking part of it. And it's just, well, what are we going to do with it? Let's talk about that. And I just felt like it was like the judge and the mayor's like tug of war on who was going to get what, or family is going to get whatever attachment. So my question, and I, I was sitting there, and I believe Mueller was in the office at, at time, he was a magistrate. And I said, okay, look, look, Judge Mayor, who is trying to get something personal out of this? Because there's no way that we can't make a decision here on a huge piece of property that's going to be amazing for Frankfurt. We're still arguing. Well, about that time, Bevin's numbers started dropping in the, in the governor's race. So when Bevin's numbers started dropping, Bevin then came in, swooped in, got the piece of property, and said, we're just going to do a bid. So with that bid came that you had to build a parking garage. How many people are really going to bid on that? Well, it tells you how many. No one.
Until the last minute.
Until the very last few hours of that.
The bid didn't change, did it? I mean, once the bid's out, you can't modify it.
Correct. Once the bid's in, it's, it's a bid and it's sealed until the day, until you open it.
When they opened it and the guy got one for a thousand bucks.
Correct.
Wasn't it his responsibility to build the garage?
Once he purchased that piece of property, it then becomes his purpose of building the garage, yes. Whoever bought that property, it becomes his issue.
Well, how did it turn out that the city had to do it?
It, I don't think it ever turned out that the city had to do it. What happened was, when we went to DC, we had meetings with Mitch McConnell, Andy Barr, and a lot of us strategic people in Frankfurt went. Michael Mueller, I think, was there. Keith was there at the time, who was our city manager, yes, Keith Parker. And so the conversation happened with Secretary Child that we asked for transportation grants, and she didn't have any. And the only thing transportation that she had at the time was transit center money. And, you know, I leaned over and said, Keith, maybe we should build a transit center, you know? And, you know, I leaned over and said, Keith, maybe we should build a transit center, you know, and that gets our parking added on to a building. But we get something out of it in the long run. And he was, I think at the time, I think he said something like, oh, I think we're too small for that. And I'm like, but it gets us a parking garage, right?
Right, and this was secret, uh, federal transportation secretary Elaine Chao.
That is correct, yes. And so we came back home and then, of course, Keith does what he does best and that's keep connections and networking. And he came up on the money, the grant, the, the federal grant and that could help this out. Because the owner of parcels B and C was not gonna do anything with that property. And when you look at it, that's the backhand stuff. So people are, you know, there's always rumors and things. Who does a thousand dollar bid on this with not knowing who's gonna help with the parking garage? So you know that there was back, there was, there was talk in the background, that someone told that person to put in that bid at the last hour because there was not another bid. And I feel like there was also conversation that there could be federal money coming in that we would push. Of course Frankfurt's gonna help because if we don't help, we have a piece of property, as you said, it's worth thousands.
Worth millions.
But it's not gonna happen if one person is gonna have to take over that eight to ten million dollar project that's not gonna bring them in a cent.
Yeah, and a thousand dollar bid at the time should not have been viewed as a thousand dollar bid by the bidder. That's a thousand dollars plus ten million dollars.
Correct, so they're going in basically a negative ten million. Yes, so as of right now.
And we're on the hook for millions, we being city taxpayers.
Correct. However, we have the grant money coming in and then we have what's a TIF that will reimburse the city first going forward. So we're hoping that all of our money will be coo- recouped through the TIF and so it will be paid. And yes.
But the TIF doesn't exist right now, right?
No, we have, we have the right to start until twenty twenty-five. And so as you stated, you're right, everyone would have paid for that. So if we had known that was going through, that's politics for you. Certain people get to know certain things that we don't. And I do see that it's, it was unfair because I would have loved for someone else in our community to pay the thousand or two thousand dollars for this piece of property if they knew they weren't gonna have that over their head. Um, and everybody would have. And so to me, that's politics, but that really didn't have anything to do with the city portion. We're just saying, hey, we wanna help move this forward. If not, we're messed up, like, we're in a hole. And we're gonna have a hole in Frankfurt that's not bringing any, in any money until that's taken care of.
Will the, will the, um, hotel gets a hundred fifty to three hundred parking spaces? So they get fifty percent of the new parking garage.
Yes, I think it's like a hundred and thirty.
Pay tax on the value of that parking garage on the fifty percent of the parking spots?
It will be a city-owned parking garage.
So the hotel's getting the hundred fifty spots free. City, city being every time I say city, it's the taxpayers. They're gonna have to pay to maintain a parking garage.
We will.
Yeah, it's a non-revenue generating structure.
Right, but it's gotta be maintained. Cause I remember there was issues with the one that fiscal court uses for a while and it was pretty expensive to get that repaired.
And we're hoping, once that is built, the goal is for parcels B and C to be built out with condos or apartments, uh, mixed-use space, you know, some exciting things that will drive more revenue from that space that will hopefully pay for some of that and be able for us to move things forward.
But the picture on the, the billboard that was down there for years, I've been told, that's done, is not gonna happen. You know, with all the condos or all the apartments around it, I heard that's to the wayside.
You know, I can't really speak on that as far as being a developer or not. What I can say is that's what we were shown, but that's not what we were shown this time. When we asked for an update and, and a couple of meetings ago, they showed up on, um, on the Zoom and they showed us not the property we asked for an update on, they showed us the other piece of property of where the YMCA will be torn down. And so within that piece of property, they are now saying that maybe some townhomes or some kind of livable space will come to that corner. So I'm not sure what to expect from these developers.
Affordable housing.
To be honest, I very seriously doubt that any of that's gonna be affordable housing. We are in desperate need. One thing that I've looked at, um, when I did some research in affordable housing in Louisville, is that when, uh, those, uh, developers come in and build market value or higher, you know, rent, rentable facilities, is asking them, could you do five percent or ten percent of your units to be affordable housing and have an application process for that? So there could be people that needs affordable housing living there, but you have to go through a particular, you know, application to make sure that, you know, that they'll be able to live in a space enough.
For something like that because the bid's won, you got CRM and the Johnson fellow. Does the city, well, could they, could they just like tomorrow sell the property for five million dollars and walk away and then?
They could do whatever they want with it, it's their property.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying.
It's their property. And in the contract, they, they don't have to do anything until we're eighty to eighty-five percent, uh, finished with the transit center. So that means if we're eighty, eighty-five percent, that means we're completing the transit center. So you could turn around and sell the whole property for millions and just.
And it'd be much more valuable.
Not have to worry with it.
Yeah, be much more valuable with the transit center and the parking garage on it. Uh, the fellows, I don't think, no, I, I do, I'm not gonna touch the hotel yet.
Well, and i- if, you know, if something happens with the TIF or, or.
If it doesn't happen.
No, if something does happen, and then it makes it more attractive to buy as well. Uh, because then you know there, there are subsidies coming in and, and, um, you know, but the, you know, getting the, you know, getting a TIF also depends on what are you wanna do with the property, you know? And it changes the direction of what the purpose of the property could be. You know, you, I don't think a TIF would allow for, for housing. Uh, now if it was a revenue job, you know, I think it has to be revenue generating and, and job creating. Now on the state level, it, they've changed the rules on that and it has to be something that net new, uh, business to Frankfurt. Like we couldn't build something there that already exists in Frankfurt. You know, it has to be, it has to be something that we're bringing new to the community that Frankfurt does not already have, like an ample theater.
We got a couple of questions, Eric. One, one person asks, uh, who actually owns parcel B and C? Cause you know, it's.
Privately owned. So you have Craig Turner, um, and then the developer on that is Johnson, Marty Johnson. Think I have that right.
CRM properties is part of it too?
You know, I can't say which.
And Red Run, is it Red Run?
That whole mess that Kyle is so diligently working through. Yeah, he's really been digging and, and I appreciate that because if there's anything out there that Kyle could dig up on, on that and, and, you know, anything happened to where it's fraudulent or on, you know, unethical or illegal, you know, he'll find it. And, you know, it'll come to that. I'm just hoping it doesn't halter or halt our, um, parcels B and C. We, uh, or the transit, we still need that to be forward. Right, that has to happen one way or another.
I thought that they deeded that land that the, the transit center back to the city. So that's not technically part of B and C.
Correct, but it was, right. So that's why I'm hoping that it will not be affected if there is something with what Kyle is digging up, which is very interesting.
Oh, I guess it could revert back.
It could revert back since it was prior to when that contract was signed, could possibly.
Could possibly unravel.
Too many grants and things that are on time limits and things for both of them.
I guess if it was fraudulent, you would have to go back to the deeds of the property as of two thousand seventeen prior to the bid.
That is correct. That's what I would think, I'm not legal, but it scares me when I look at it that way.
Commissioner Thompson put out on his Facebook page about an iron, iron forty-five minute video detailing from the beginning to that point in time, probably two weeks ago.
Yes, he did an excellent.
Very, very interesting stuff.
The other question was, is there legal accountability for the successful bidder? Um, I will answer that with, that is yet to be, that, that is being investigated.
That is correct.
Yeah, there is no answer for that question at this point in time.
Is correct.
Paula, I went to school with her. Paula, did you hear that? So hopefully, hopefully that'll answer. If not, just type in another question and Commissioner Walters will be glad to answer.
Debate thing. If you don't get an answer, ask again.
There you go.
So, um, let's see, the Y is gonna be tore down. Is there something with the federal property, the federal courthouse? Was it, did that come into play somehow recently?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I thought maybe somebody had mentioned it was gonna be used for something, then the federal government decided to keep, they were gonna give the federal courthouse to the city. Maybe, I don't know.
Um, that's the building right next to the YMCA, yes. So no, not at this time. I think there's been talks of, you know, possibility if they're not using a certain percentage of the building, if they would like, we would like the first, um, go at it. Cause it could be something like City Hall, it could be something like that, yes.
First right of refusal.
Off topic for one second, put the City Hall in the old Paul Sawyer Library. That building is beautiful. Well, it's just money. I mean, we got plenty of it. But it would, it would be a lot. I know, you know, I toured it with KSU, they own it right now. But I mean, that is a, would be an awesome City Hall, not some square block building. That's sitting next to the Y.
Been talk of that as well, but I think there's also talk of hopefully someone, hopefully person seeing that building and.
I don't think the, I don't think.
But, but doesn't the, the bottom and basement, the first floor and the basement flood?
If it gets like thirty-eight feet, if we have, you know.
But, but it's not, it's not like, it's not like a hundred year flood, it, it will get water much more frequently than that.
Got it was in nineteen seventy-eight, so fifty-year flood.
Got where?
In the bottom of the Paul Sawyer Library.
Uh, I'm thinking it got in there in the nineties, in the big flood that we had, when was it, ninety-six, seven?
That was in the up thirty-foot range, thirty-some odd foot range.
But it, it didn't get into the basement at least there possibly.
It, it can also get in the library, but didn't stop us from building the Paul Sawyer Library, it's got in there too.
I guess that's true, good point.
So, um, but yeah, that would be my preference. I mean, that's a beautiful building. I mean, we would have probably the best, the prettiest City Hall, certainly in all of Kentucky, by a mile.
And the courtroom upstairs is beautiful.
Right, yeah, if you've, if you've been in there?
I, I've not been beyond the, probably the first floor.
It is cool as can be, esp- especially the courtrooms upstairs. It's, it's really.
As long as it's not a money pit, right?
It'll cost, a KSU estimated about a million dollars to get it fixed up to.
Oh, it's not gonna be that, uh, it's gonna be way more than that. Oh, yeah, that was like a few years ago.
Two years ago, I think.
It'll be a hefty price.
You underestimate the, the ability to spend money.
Yeah, cause I'm a tight one, right, Eric?
You are, that is a fact.
He's driving a huge, brand-new truck right off, being all residential.
I'm gonna jump to his personal defense. The, the car that he had prior to that, he bought it brand-new in two thousand four?
Yep, thirteen years old. Right, so since nineteen eighty-nine, I've owned two vehicles.
The only person that I. The only person I know that will drive a vehicle longer might be Michael Gibson, Gibby. And if, if not, uh, if, if that car had not been wrecked, he would still be driving. Because the cost of driving it was less than buying a new one.
Right, and I'd never splurged on nothing, so I said, it's time for old dad to get paid.
So he went out and bought something nice.
So, um, anything else on B or C? I mean, I know we could go days on it.
You know, I think, you know, I'm hoping and have faith that something is going to come on parcels B and C. It's just with the up and down and not having updates all the time and really what's going on, it does worry me. Um, because it is such a grand piece of property in our downtown. Another issue that plays into the parcels B that everyone talks about is YMCA. Everyone wants a YMCA to come back in. And at the time that this happened, there was a piece of property that was promised to parcels B and C for the YMCA. Um, as we all know, the YMCA has not started any campaign whatsoever. Uh, not one, not one dollar has been raised, um, and it's been how many years? Um, and so for me, I just, I don't feel positive about that relationship where the YMCA coming back to Frankfurt. I know that there was a deal talked about in, in Bardstown and they talked about that for a few years and I think that even fell through with the YMCA. I just don't foresee that the YMCA is really, really serious on bringing back and paying to put a, a full YMCA with the pool and all the things that we want in Frankfurt. I just don't see it. And I think we, as a city, have to start talking about that. And if that's it, we need to make sure that we're eliminating them on that part. So we can move forward to look to see what that's gonna cost the city for an indoor space that's gonna give us all the things that we want. Whether that's hopefully parcels B and C giving us another piece of property or making that with that, or whether they can try to build something that can be leased out for our community center. But I think we continue to think and, and speak on the YMCA. And right now, that dream is just not something I feel like it's gonna be had.
Realize that, that, that the YMCA as an organization is a financially failing organization. They are struggling.
Across the country.
Across the country. And, and to invest that in, in Frankfurt, as a business person myself, I don't see that as a financially fruitful venture. And if, if they were to, to come back to Frankfurt, I don't think I would put them on what could be the most valuable property in Frankfurt.
Well, we look at that, and, and when we put them there, just because it's downtown and, and a lot of things want to come because there's a new update at YMCA. It also putting it there helps maybe even have a partnership with the state. The state employees can walk over and work out. So we may be able to get funding there to help out. So when you loo- really look at it, it, it is a great piece to put a YMCA there. I just don't foresee this.
Benefits of potential state interest in that.
And one, one last thing, um, I was also told that, um, the dirt on, like, there's a hundred-year thing that it, as long as the Capitol Plaza Hotel was, was owned by their current owners. Um, we couldn't build another hotel within a mile of the Capitol Plaza Hotel, circle or square or whatever. But now that, the, I was told the dirt was sold under the hotel that the hotel sits on to the potential new buyers, which wipes out that agreement. That means a hotel could be built. I've heard of a hotel being built across the road, uh, on the riverfront. I don't know, I just, you know, just, you just hear different rumors. Yeah, but is that true? The dirt's been sold and that, that deal of you can't build within a mile? Um, we could have a hotel come in, get another tax generating property helping the city, helping Frankfurt hide in secondary. Is that plausible now?
Yes, so, um, that contract has ran out, um, and that ran out, I wanna say maybe June of last year. And, uh, so now building is not an issue within how many ever miles. And I have heard through the grapevine that that property was purchased. I've not seen the paperwork or seen anything that solidifies that, but I have heard that. Um, again, that's some of the conversations that maybe I'm not in or have not had updates of at this time, but I have heard that. I can't confirm because I've not received that information. But the contract part of, uh, hotels being within a mile or two of that Capitol Plaza is done. And I felt like, I felt like as a city, we should have pushed a little harder on that because I felt like as soon as the Capitol Plaza shut their doors to a, a bar and shut their doors to having a restaurant in there, I think that that, uh, that particular contract should have been nullled because it was nullled for a full-service hotel. And Capitol Plaza was not giving Frankfurt a full-service hotel. So for me, I think, even before then, I think we should have been pushing harder on that because it's a building, something that was gonna be in competing. Well, a full-service hotel is not competing if you're not a full-service hotel anymore. So, you know, when we look at things like that, we have to make sure we're doing all that we can. And I think that's just where we sort of let the ball slip through instead of pushing on that. Because I really think we could have started hotel or bringing in someone since they were not give us, giving us a full-service hotel.
Is there a limit, like say a hotel built across the street on the blacktop where, um,
Farmers Market.
Farmers Market is, is there, could they build a fifteen-story hotel there? Is there a limit on how high they could go? Because with Buffalo Trace getting four hundred fifty thousand visitors a year, maybe we could get some of them to stay open. Uh, stay over, come in early, stay over, whatever, and visit all our downtown businesses, come up to my place. Cause I love seeing all this stuff downtown because we get ancillary business off of it. So keep it up, DFI. Y'all are awesome. But it, could we build a fifteen-story hotel or is there a three-story limit in town or, you know, anything?
I don't know if it's a story, uh, um, limit as far as fifteen or ten or what have you. But I know in the, in the rim of the old Capitol, um, one portion is about sixty feet, I think, and the other portion is about forty feet, I believe. And so when you're looking at those heights, you have to follow in that because it is a historic area, the historical district.
So it's limited by that?
Closer to that, it is. It is limited by that and whatever it is. So you're looking that you can't be taller than, um, I think it's sixty feet down that, I can't remember. But I don't foresee it being a fifteen-story or anything, you know? I mean, I'm looking if a hotel comes there and you're right there on the riverfront, which is our bin and our river, to make sure that FEMA and all of those people and Corps of Engineers approve that. And they have found that piece of property, um, suffice enough to be able to build that and possibly thirty thousand square feet of prop, of convention center um, for Frankfurt. But, um, you know, I don't know if it would be that many, you know, you're looking in Mount Sixty.
You'd, you'd want the top floors to have the view of the river. That, that.
That is correct.
That's the thing, not the side of a hill.
That is correct. And so, um, you know, you're gonna have to look at parking also with that hotel and, and.
Build another parking garage.
And putting, and putting parking with the hotel, you wanna make sure that you see that strategically because you don't want that parking garage to get a great view of the river, right? So one thing that I would definitely see that if there were, you know, if we actually got a hotel there is the top floor be, uh, community-driven. So put the restaurant, uh, on the top floor. That way you and I and everyone in Frankfurt can come and have a really nice dinner and also take that in. So, and then if you want it condos on a floor, if you want it to do that, then that should go on the second floor.
Like Ruth Chris and, and Malone's in Louisville, they're up high.
Yeah, so for me, I, I would want it on the first, uh, the top floor, maybe the one below that or whatever. But also anything going up, I would love people to use their roofs for green space if possible, you know, to do events or be able to go out on there and not just have certain, you know. and not just have certain, you know, big boxes.
Plant grass on our building if we could get a grant to put it up there. Everybody else is getting grants, I want some too.
Well, and a good thing like, i- i- if you did that, you know, elevated like that, that could even be part of of a restaurant or whatever, they could have food, have food service up there. And if you do have guests or or whatever below that, the people on the roof wouldn't disturb them because you'd have a whole restaurant cushion in between there.
Yeah, but I think we have to take that in consideration when we're looking at that and what our next steps is for that piece of property that we've obtained. Um, and really looking at, you know, the, um, the rollout that Capital Plaza just put out, you know, with the new owners. You know, if they get these tourism credits and what space they're hoping to add to this and and what updates they're hoping to add to Capital Plaza. So they do have great space, it's just, it just needs major renovation, major update, but they also have opportunities. You know, that we've sort of had the things that they would like to do, add more space on the backside where the little stores are in the back, right? And you could add more space there, uh, maybe even seeing if the building can hold another level floor, right? I don't know what that height is, or if that'd be approved, but when you're looking at adding things like that, maybe, you know, sometimes we have to pump the brakes on, okay. How much convention space or meeting space will Capital Plaza render when all this is said and done? And we need to take that consideration to make sure we're not doubling the same exact space across the street. So if that's the case and we have a lot of meeting space, we may have some meeting space on the other side, but it may push for maybe a larger room where we can have maybe concerts in there and things of that nature. You know, we look, and then the whole side could be glass where you could look out over the river and um, I don't know if you've been to Owensboro lately, but their convention center is amazing. It takes in all the river every time you go in, it's just glass. And I would love to see something like that if that's possible.
We we, I used to do a lot of work way back in the day there in in, uh, Owensboro, and there's yeah, they've got, they've done some really nice building, uh, recently and for the last probably ten or fifteen years. It's funny you bring up the Capital Plaza cuz I found it kinda interesting that we had the governor there and and officials, uh, and not the Chamber of Commerce. Do you have any ideas on that?
It's election season.
Are you talking about the photo with the governor?
Photo op of the governor?
Only elected officials in the three.
Could not get over.
Yeah, well, I could, yeah, that one, cuz I could. We did some duck digging and there's all kinds of motivation as to why the governor would be there.
Well, Eric, when when Farmers Bank sold, you worked at Farmers Bank.
I did, I did.
VP over IT security.
I was, I was for almost twenty years.
And y'all had banks all over Kentucky, correct?
Yes. About forty locations.
Multi-billion dollar bank? I don't remember.
Yeah, it was almost, uh, it was about one point seven billion when it sold.
And when when it sold, was there any fanfare?
Nah, I I don't think anybody knew until the West Bankers started putting up green signs.
But we sell a hotel and we got from the governor down.
Governor there.
That's powerful.
Yeah, yeah, um.
Well, I think it was pretty big news. I get what everyone's saying with the whole photo op.
Just read between the lines.
Really, it was just really nice to see that something is going to occur to something we all wish and want to be improved. And I think with the governor of, you know, I I feel like Rashir does support, growth does support. Been one to get in there, and I think that he realizes, and every time I see him, hey, we gotta focus on the state capital. We're totally different than every single city and county in this. We are the state capital, so we should have more funds coming here for tourism. We are the state capital, you know, a lot of people travel to see just state capitals, right? And then they'll see everything else here, you know, and so we have to get more of that and let this people in our, um, capital realize how important we are and how much more money to me, I think that we need to really push the capital. So I think this is on the governor's behalf of him pushing more money out to folks. I would have to say that I have applauded him on putting money where it is needed to be, whether that's nonprofits, whether that's, uh, across state, you know, for FEMA and different things going out. I just feel like he's done a really good job at trying to get money.
He probably has done better than most governors in in recent history.
Contribution since Governor Carroll said it way back in the seventies, I reckon. And it hadn't been raised until last year.
He graciously, um, gra- he graciously increased that a bit. I think that, uh, in due time that we need to, uh, you know, get it over time because you're looking at six or thirty six million dollars of state property that we gain no tax from. So when you give us a little meas- you know, you feel like nine hundred thousand, you know? When you're, when you're looking at that, when you're looking at that, then it's like, how much money should we be getting in this? And, you know, putting money toward our city, and it really does.
And our schools, and our schools. Frankfurt High and Frankfurt High and Second Street are the big losers. They're the biggest losers. Because of all the government property we got downtown.
And and another, 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 uh, controversial, maybe abrasive comment. What people don't realize or don't think about is all that state government, that's non-revenue generating for the city.
That is correct.
Zero dollars.
That is correct.
And on top of that, state government artificially keeps wages low in Frankfurt. Because wages for state employees come from taxpayer money. And it's not popular to pay everybody that works for govern- for government a hundred grand a year.
We worked for retirement.
You work for retirement.
Years in transportation.
And job security.
And I worked for retirement, yeah.
Well, yeah, and and my point on that is when you have wages that are are lower than than competing uh, private sector jobs, you all get less money.
That is correct.
In in in, um.
Payroll taxes.
Payroll taxes. Uh, there is another name for it. I I just totally spaced out. And and I think people need to consider that, and I think Rashir is is, you know, made the the those, I won't say wise decision or generous decision to give more money because government does strip away a lot from Frankfurt.
But we're glad to get it.
We're glad to get it. Absolutely.
We're glad to get what we do.
I think everybody needs to keep that in consideration. I think people often often forget that. Because as a city, there are only so many avenues of of funds that you all can generate. You know, uh, so I think it's just important to keep that into perspective.
Cuz he really helped, um, he really helped when he was giving out the small grants to a lot of our nonprofits and a lot of nonprofits here when they get in trouble. Or, you know, they feel like they need more money. A lot of times they come to the city and ask for us for help. So that really helped with him giving more money for them and cushioning that to where we, you know, we're not trying to look to where we have to update.
Let me qualify this. Net Reynolds, um, said, as an F I S alum, I have to say we are not the biggest losers. Oh, you meant missing tax revenue. Yes, that's correct now.
That is correct.
Net, Net was an altar boy in our wedding, so I've known Net. Teresa and I've been married thirty. I've known Net and his family for a long, long time.
Financially, they are the biggest losers. There should be more money coming into that school system.
Right, because they're just.
Programming, for upgrades, things like that, yes.
Right.
Yes.
And, um, so anything else, Eric, Catricia, that y'all wanna say on B and C?
I think, I think we covered B and C and we covered the Capital Plaza Hotel pretty well.
Yeah.
Uh, there was something in there you wanted to ask too.
There were the, the, let's see.
Taylor, Taylor Avenue.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Taylor Avenue thing. We had a rockfall, you know, with drone videos. I took pictures, everybody took pictures, Dr. Birch took pictures and.
It's big news for.
Uh, it's huge, it's still big news. And it's gonna have a huge impact on Frankfurt.
Yes.
And it could have even a bigger, you know, um, I asked Ray Kenny, uh, to to come on, but I'm sure he's limited. Said he was limited in what he could say. I totally understand, and I'm sure you're limited too. But, um, pretty spectacular event for Frankfurt.
Yeah.
For this quarry.
Yes, um, and, you know, I feel, following up with, you know, what happened and what could happen at any moment. Could happen in the next five minutes, could happen in the next five years, five months, five days. We really don't know.
Five decades.
Yeah, we we don't know, um, you know, I'm not comfortable with the way that the rock is laying. Um, and when you look at the bottom portion, it really looks like it's snuggled in there with a lot of loose rocks. That heavy rains could come and swish away and soon as it does, which way does it go? Does it go over in the water? Does it land on the house? Does it land on the road? You know, what does it look like? And when you're looking at that, you know, how how tall it is, um, you know, it's gonna go across into the road, um, it could do more damage as our director of sewer, uh, Kenny Hawkinson, you know, it could take that road out, it could, it's gonna damage everything probably below it, which is sewer lines, gas lines, elect, all of that's gonna all be affected. And so, you know, right now, it's just sort of closed indefinitely until, you know, we we see another direction to go. Everyone's back in their homes. Um, knowing, uh, that it's a sort of up in the air. I did speak with the, uh, the gentleman that lives at the bottom in the home right next to it. Uh, he was on his back porch that evening, he said, and he's like, you know, I heard some dropping, you know, nothing more than usual, and, you know, he heard that all morning long while he was drinking his coffee, and then the big piece fell.
Yeah, well, Craig posted, apparently somebody had reached out to you that morning before it actually fell.
One of the two homeowners up on top.
They were asking, you know, do other people hear hear these noises? And the next thing, I know the next report is big, huge rockfalls.
Yeah, I found out about seven thirty in the morning, I think. It's, uh, a friend of mine sent me a picture, like picture of there's level ground and there's trees. All across. The picture he sent me, he goes, there was a tree there.
There was.
Now, here's the top of it, you can see this much of the tree. Everything below it, this fifty foot tree is gone. It's, it slid down the hill. I said, holy crap.
Now, is the state going to, I mean, we've got a lot of, uh, geologists at the state that do like abandoned mines and stuff like that. Their whole specialty is, you know, ground that's moving, you know, gonna fall, break or whatever. Uh, is the state gonna provide any resources to check that out, or is that gonna all be on us?
I really, I mean, I think that we're gonna definitely ask for the state to come in, but that's really, um, I mean, it's not our property. It's really the homeowner's property that's there, and that's his piece of property, but we have, being that it does affect us as far as safety, it affects us as far as electorate and sewer, uh, we have to be part of that, so.
And that's the, that's the thing that I was thinking about too. I mean, cuz you got Dr. Birch, and I can't remember who his neighbor is.
Mark Stamper.
Mark Stamper. I didn't know Mark lived up here.
Brick house.
But, you know, yes, ultimately, you know, they are responsible, but how far down do you own?
Do you own the mineral rights, like in the mountains? Do they own the mineral right to the coal and the natural gas in the mountains? Of course, they do.
Well, and and, you know, you're talking about a project to to secure, demolish, or whatever has to happen. Millions of dollars. Those homeowners aren't gonna have millions of dollars to fund that. The state's gonna have to come in, FEMA or somebody.
Hollywood.
Hollywood.
Hollywood can come in, do a controlled blast, make a spectacular, uh, movie. And, you know, have a plane fly, have James Bond fly out of the sky or something. I mean.
Well, and and the state offers, um, economic development offers for movies now too.
So that's come the, some of the crazy ideas we come up with.
They.
And I think that they, that there was an idea that was being spoke about, you know, could there be something that comes in to help unlog this or break that down, but then if we do that, does something bigger happen, right? So I think it's just really sitting and waiting and seeing what happens and just closing it down.
Well, there's a a big question, been, I've been asked a lot, is how far back does it go? Uh, David Herred, you know, Herred and Carter, Herred Concrete, um, the State Journal posted it like five miles back, so I took that quote and asked David, and he said, don't think so. They they couldn't move that much rock and process that much rock at the time that was open. That was not their quarry, from what I understand. It was somebody else's, his dad worked there, but I don't think they ever owned it. But, you know, there was questions on whether they had enough pillars up to keep it stable or something like that. So I started looking around, you know, I got a couple of friends that do a lot of drone work. And, uh, uh, one of them flew into the, inside the cave about five feet, but you lose line of sight and, um, the GPS for it. So I got to looking around. There's companies that have it's kind of futuristic, but it's pretty cool, fully autonomous drones that map with LiDAR. LiDAR, you know, like radar, they map the inside of that facility. So I sent him an email. I said, you know, if it was something cheap, I'd buy it. Something rea- and David said that David Herred said he would even help pay for part of it. But has the city ever considered getting one of those companies come in and fly around and map and see what's actually in there? Cuz this thing flies autonomously.
Yeah.
Uh, doesn't need line of sight, doesn't need, um, GPS coordinates or nothing. It it got LEDs all over cuz there's YouTube videos from the company. Looks pretty.
So it's like the little vacuum cleaners except it flies. It just.
Well, it's a little bit more than that.
Well, I mean, it's the same, well, I mean, it's the same concept. You got the vacuum cleaner learns.
But, you know, they use it, it's mostly used for mines to map mines that are down in the ground and you.
I'm sure that's something Ray and and our engineers have thought about with emergency management, probably exploring, and I'm sure they're trying to explore any avenue possible to try to, you know, get us moving in the right direction and see how safe that we can be. Um, but it's, it's a natural to me, it looks like it's a natural disaster that's happened on someone's private property, and I think for me, I want the state, FEMA and people to do more. Uh, yes, it does affect our city, but to me, this is a natural, it's like a natural disaster, really.
Yeah, I just wondered if you could. You got the ground penetrating radar that you need to see.
This you could see from the inside. I wonder if you could see.
Yeah, but you wouldn't be able to tell. Yeah, but you wouldn't be able to tell how far those go. That's where the ground penetrating radar from the top down.
Yeah, if it goes that deep.
I don't know how it'd be.
But I did speak with, um, on, um, Thursday or Friday, I had a meeting.
Closer to the microphone.
Oh, Thursday or Friday, I had a meeting with, um, our director of sewer, Kenny Hawkinson, and, you know, I I feel positive that we're moving to fix the problem at the top that would have an issue such as the, um, sewer. So trying to work on that, we've had to change some things in the direction of what we're working on first. But I I have all faith in Kenny and his team over there to start getting things moving in the right direction for the sewer to be, um, rerouted.
What was the the description that Kenny gave if say it failed tonight? And, you know, cuz the sewer line's thirteen feet from the edge.
Correct.
And in the city commission meeting, he described what it would look like if it gave away and the pipe broke. You remember?
Right, so, yes, so, yeah, so it would be like a sewer waterfall, but it would not be like a complete sewer. It would only be, I think it's like five to ten percent because of where the location is. But our other goal would be what's in the, underneath of the road at the bottom, when that piece falls over, what's gonna happen as well. So they're trying to reroute on top, so it doesn't, but in where the intake or outtake comes in, what Kenny said is that it wouldn't be enough to where it was gonna affect our our water per se, um, or it traveling to other areas, correct?
Up upstream where people.
Correct, and that's where a lot of money comes in too, if that happens, so, yeah.
Well, it sounded like they've got a, got a plan.
Yeah.
Um, we just hope mother nature don't get involved.
It's just, yes, when it, when it rains like this, you don't know how things are settling, and then the scary part is when the Chris, when Christmas, you know, gets closer to summer um, Christmas time, you know, you have your ice.
Ice.
Freezing thaw.
And it freezes, expands, and there's thaws, and that may be a little bit of concern, definitely coming up.
Yeah, I heard Ray, I heard Ray say, yeah, we wanna get through the freeze thaw, freeze thaw, thaw cycle of this winter.
I wanna keep with the policy, I don't know all of that.
I'm just remembering from what what he said in the commission meeting.
Yes.
I said, the good thing about freeze thaw, um, it is, no, well, i- it's limited on how, how much of the dirt it can affect.
Right.
But anywhere there's a crack that air gets through, obviously, you know, typically we look at the frost line at what, like twenty four to thirty inches?
Yeah.
Deep, uh, but we gotta remember those cracks and crevices and all can, you know, greatly alter that, and you're right, if it expands, you know, nobody knows until we get some professionals in there, what is it gonna take to push that big rock over? You know, is it two or three inches of expansion, gonna knock it over and take out Taylor Avenue and?
Well, cuz if it sits, it sits like on each corner, there's piles of rock, and then underneath, you know, I got some closeups on my Facebook page, if you wanna go see them. It's hollow underneath.
Well, but you don't.
Two points.
But you don't know where the center of gravity is. Is the rock leaning back? Is it leaning forward?
Top part is leaning to the left with the brown rock and where the trees are at.
And I don't know how many thousands of tons that rock would be. I don't even know mathematically how to equate that, that's why I said you get the pros in there.
That's what Ray and Kenny and all those guys were for.
Yeah, that's what I asked Kenny, and Kenny's like, I don't know how much that thing is gonna weigh, but it's gonna do some damage when it comes down.
I mean, somebody knows how to do that math, but, uh.
I'm sure mining companies.
Yeah, well, that's why I thought of abandoned mines, uh, that out of here in Frankfurt, cuz I have a, a friend of mine who who works for abandoned mines, and that's what he does. He walks mines and and inspects abandoned mines uh, for that kinda, for that kinda stuff. Obviously, this is something on what I would think would be a completely different scale, but, but, you know, he still has the geological knowledge.
Nothing, long as nobody gets hurt, it doesn't tear up any infrastructure. It is interesting as can be.
It is, it is.
You know, if it gets a big rain, I'm gonna be on the other side of the river watching.
Yeah.
I've told, I've I've met a guy that said from his house at the, I don't know what's what the name of that road is, but he said he's got a perfect view. And he said, come on over, we'll sit after him, watch it together.
I would definitely want FEMA involved because Stamper and Birch, I mean, they they can't get, um, earthquake insurance at this point. If they don't already have the rider, there's no way that that they'll be able to add that rider on there. But anyway.
Um, so we did hit the hotel.
Yep.
Um, this, something I asked the mayor about, um, Ford Hill, I can't remember. Fort Hill, I can't remember if he was on the commission or not, where they said there was a push to put mountain bike trails up there to draw more tourism in for downtown Frankfurt, for the businesses downtown. I've had mountain bikers or bicycle riders come up to our restaurant at the top of Louisville Hill. And I know Capital View Park's got like eleven or twelve miles of trails. We get people from all over Kentucky and this, all the states surrounding us to do mountain bike rides there. I've heard from a guy from Indiana that there used to be a twelve hour event. And they would have thousand people, twelve hundred people come and attend that event over a weekend. That's bringing a lot of money into town.
Definitely.
Have y'all ever talked about, uh, revisiting, uh, Fort Hill and mountain bike trails?
I think we brought it up. Uh, it's been a while, but I think that it was brought up, but it was never brought up as a vote or on an agenda. I think it just is little things that I may bring up. Like, well, we can bring that back up. I think we have a, you know, with, uh, Commissioner Unger on there, um, myself, uh, cause I was one that supported that actually, um, and tried to bring it back up.
So you were on the commission then?
Yeah, I was on the commission and, um, I feel, I feel the mayor would support it. I feel Kelly would support it. And I really feel like the Kyle would. I think it brings in tourist in a way. And I feel like, to be honest, when you've done your research, and I did a little research at the time when it was a big ordeal, um, at the time to switch. I feel like bikers really do take care of their area and they're appreciative of giving them trails and they actually pick up trash. They actually have funds to help and give communities to say, hey, thank you for allowing this trail. We wanna give money to help upkeep this. And I think that when you look at bikers like that, they're just more appreciative than anything. Yes, there's going to be those people who are going to tear up things and try to run it for all of us. But to me, it's not the bikers at all are the ones that are gonna be that will have to keep out for the others.
It'd be less than five percent of the people that use it.
You've got it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you, you look at, you know, there may be, you know, the problem with that is it's gonna be local people taking their mountain bikes up there. You know, these guys that travel, I mean, they live by a code. And they're very, they're very, very diligent, like you said, about taking care of stuff and they will call each other out. Look, no, that's not right.
And you're spending seven thousand dollars on a mountain bike? You've got expendable money to spend at many of the businesses and the new bourbon bars and all that stuff downtown. That, that generate a lot of revenue for those folks.
Definitely.
I think so.
I think so. Yeah. And it goes back to what, you know, Craig and I have talked about before is, you know, whether, whether attractions live in the city or in the county, it benefits everybody. You know, you get people that, that go to these restaurant, you know, go to the restaurants. You know, maybe they stay at hotels or whatever. And, you know, it's good for everyone to promote these kinda things. Because, you know, the, the trail may be in, in the city or, you know, the county could be promoting something, but it's mutually beneficial for everyone.
It is. And when we have something so large that has so many acreage in our downtown and our city area, we really have to take advantage of that. I mean, you know, more people need to understand what Fort Hill is. And, and if we're appreciative of that history there and we want to keep that history, we need to drive more people up there. And if it's a reason of, you know, my, mountain bike, then let's do that. Um, you know, we had a great event, uh, thrown by parks, you know, uh, hunting on the hill. And this has been the second year. It's been a successful event. Just getting people up there to know what it is and what the space is, is really what we need to do.
And there's that walking trail. You can walk around it and it's got the, the, uh, the plat, the boards that tell what went on where. And it's great views.
Yeah.
Yeah, you get up there on the top and it's got a really good view of, you can see, you know, the old Capitol, the, the old Capitol annex, the new buildings down there.
I bet you can see that cliff really well too.
Uh, I've never been up there in the daytime. We went up here for Haunting on the Hill.
Oh, okay.
And so you couldn't see that. I was trying.
Did y'all go out to eat after that?
No, we ate beforehand.
Oh, okay.
But it's a great event. Yeah.
Okay.
But it, it was so busy. And I was talking to some people up there and they said, well, last year we underprepared. So this year we prepared for what last year was. Well, this year surpassed last year.
That's awesome.
So it was, it was difficult. I mean, you know, uh, the transportation and logistics there was what was, I mean, they were doing the best they could. But it was still kinda, kinda lacking. So next year I think they'll probably nail it. They're gonna go, okay, we expect this, let's double that and go from there.
And it's just seeing a great partnership where so many people come together, the museum, the city parks, all of these things, these people come together and just really make it happen for our community.
And I'm gonna throw a shout out to Buffalo Trace, cause I was talking to one of their employees. I said, well, everybody's mad at Buffalo Trace because, you know, they met at Buffalo Trace. And I want, you know, Buffalo Trace did exactly what they were supposed to do. They provided exactly what they were supposed to provide. And they worked really, really hard. It's just no one expected perfect weather. And, you know, it was like a perfect storm and they were completely, you know, they just weren't prepared enough.
You met at Buffalo Trace and were bussed up there to the?
They bust you over to, to the Salvation Army Church.
Where you got on the, the train or the wagons.
You know, and then of course that's the transit authority that was, I think it was transit authority that was bringing them back and forth. Then they have to have accommodations for people who are allergic to hay. So you gotta take one of the buses up there, which makes it a little bit harder for the tractors. But I think given everything, I thought they did an absolutely awesome job. And I really look forward to next year, you know, it's a learning process, you know, it's year two.
And I think being able, you know, now that we're using this side, you know, this entrance of Fort Hill, it's something that we're taking in consideration and looking to see how we can work with the community there and making that be an, yeah. And being able to open up this side for people to get in and how we can do that, that's conducive for traffic to come in and out on that side. So that could be another idea of bringing more traffic up the hill. I'm talking to one resident now that is looking, uh, you know, interested in maybe possibly building some building up there. And so we're talking through that. So, you know, just seeing what's possible and what's not, but we've gotta be able to make it where people want to come up and spend more time.
And we, we saw an increase in business that night. So hopefully the, the bars and the restaurants downtown did the same. That's why I say in all these events, y'all are encouraged to happen downtown. Keep it going.
Yes.
Keep it going. And let's do more.
Yes, yes.
So we got, we got the downtown, we're, we're starting to get some booming business downtown and things are really livening up. We're finally starting to see some economic progress downtown. So what about Katie, uh, KCDC, DFI? How's all that gonna look? Cause they're, they're not gonna renew the contract. With Terry Bradshaw. She's not coming back. Where do you see that going? Cause I, and, and I personally don't really know how KCDC and the city and all of those entities work together.
There's KCDC, the Chamber, DFI and tourism.
And tourism. Like who funds who, where, you know, who's freestanding, who's whatever.
That's why I didn't answer this question.
I'm like, oh, that's a soft, uh, uh, question. Okay. So with KCDC, um, yes, so they did, they did vote not to extend her contract, which doesn't surprise me because I don't think it's been extended. I think she's just continuing to do the work. And so to me it's not a big change. Um, but again, um, you know, our mayor serves as, as FISCO on that particular board. And then we have three people representing the city side as well as the county, uh, having that as well. So, you know, I think Terry has been pushing forward. Terry has been, uh, attached to a lot of these projects going on in Frankfurt. Um, Terry has also done well in, in providing information to let us know how many, uh, opportunities that we have lost because we don't have land set aside for industrial. And that's anywhere from thirty acres to, you know, three hundred acres or whatever that looks like and how many opportunities Frankfurt has lost in that. So where does that go? You know, I, I can't say right now, um, because some of these conversations happen and we don't get all the information. So, um, when people serve on boards, they get the conversation back and the person that I think I speak to the most is probably Richard Rosen. Uh, which gives me, uh, both sides, you know, his side and the other side. And so, um, I do communicate with him a lot and what happens with KCDC. I think KCDC was formed because of the mismatch of, uh, information, like on the city. It's hard for us sometimes to make a, a decision. Sometimes it could take months and we argue back and forth. And so KCDC was basically in a roundabout way was made to say, hey, we've gotta e- continue economic development while you guys argue over the policy and doing things. It was sort of done so we can keep things moving in Frankfurt. So I understand it because I've experienced.
And it's not, it, it's not uncommon throughout the state that you have dedicated, uh, economic development for communities. You know, in, in northeastern Kentucky, you got the FiveCo area that's like, uh, Boyd, Greenup, Lawrence, Elliott. And I can't remember the fifth now. You know, so, you know, you got economic development people that cover that. So it's not uncommon, uh, what KCDC does. It's not common in the fact that it's just one, you know, one person in one county, but. What I don't know is where do they get funding? Like who, who writes Terry's check, her paycheck when she gets paid?
Right. So we, we and the county put in money for, for KCDC. And so that comes out of, you know, if her salary comes out of what we put in, we try to, I think, match, if I'm not mistaken, we try to match what that is in KCDC. And as to why in some of our meetings, um, you know, I, I don't know if you remember, but I asked to put fifty thousand dollars in, um, to, uh, economic development with, um, our regional area. Um, and then I think the mayor made a comment saying, oh, well, we give this amount to KCDC. And I'm like, well, are we gonna take that out of that? You know, how do we pay for her salary? How do we do things to keep KCDC moving? So I think it's a really sticky subject. Um, but to be honest, I can be honest and, and.
That's why we're, that's why we're doing the podcast.
And, and, yeah, just for clarification, we, we, our goal is to provide honest.
And not take sides.
We don't take sides.
Yeah. So, okay. Well, this is just me being blatantly honest and transparent. I feel like that some leadership in Frankfurt really has issues with strong women and being in certain positions. And I've experienced that over my past of serving in the city commission. And I think that when, um, Mayor May at the time was leaving, he did not have a work, great working relationship with Terry. It was always a negative against Terry. Um, and I, I'm not sure where that stemmed from because I was not with him before then, but I never saw that it was positive. And I feel like that when you have a strong woman who's willing to speak her mind and is doing work, sometimes that scares certain men, right? So I feel like when he left, I felt like that some of what he thought of Terry trickled down to this mayor and this commission of thinking the same thing. Because I had a conversation with our mayor, uh, Lane, and I had that conversation as soon as he was elected mayor actually. And was like, hey, all of, all of you guys are not, you know, under oath right now. I am, cause I'm serving, but I think we should meet and talk about KCDC while we have a chance, you know? And if people wanna come to that meeting, then great, but it gives us a time.
November and January.
Yeah, uh, November and Ja- and December thirty first and that we could talk about KCDC on an open level because I knew that was gonna be one of our main issues. And I said, let's get it out so we can talk, we can leave it open for a community to still come in if they want, you know, to be a part of that conversation. And that went on deaf ears. Okay. So that was a few months and then we then took oath. So now everything has to be, you know, recorded and, and, and open meetings. And then we went into January, still trying to bring it up and it still kept being tabled, not looked into. We asked for times where the city and the county could meet and talk about KCDC. Another year passed, nothing had happened.
Is that when y'all was trying to get the?
The meeting.
The two meetings and you could never pull them off?
That is correct. And how possible is it not to get a meeting? I, I just don't understand. But, you know, we go back and forth to try to work this out and it just seems like no one wants to meet about it. But then everyone wants to try to make decisions or talk about it behind closed doors. Well, exactly. And so we finally got a meeting. It was during COVID and we were on Zoom for this meeting. And we were all sitting there and all I could do was look at my square, like what are we talking about? I thought we were here to talk about KCDC. So finally I had to, uh, stop the mo- moderator at the time. And I said, okay, I'm just gonna bring up the big elephant in the room. What the heck are we gonna do about KCDC?
Well, I think it's important to talk about.
Yeah, it is.
Because it impacts, it is like what we were saying a minute ago. You know, economic development in Franklin County, whether it's city limits or it's outside of simulant, city limits is, is a benefit.
To us.
Or, or, you know, a negative impact to, to every citizen in, in, within the county. You know, is it jobs? Is it, you know, financial opportunities? Is it tax dollars coming in? You know, are we, are we, are we infilling these buildings that are just sitting there? I think it's one of the most, you know, if we want to be a tourism city or we want to be whatever we wanna be when we grow up.
Grow, period.
We wanna grow. KCDC or someone like them needs to have power, autonomy, support. Finan-, you know, both financial and, and political support. You know, we can't play political, I ain't voting because I don't like you. We can't play that.
You know, and, and a lot of this is, we're not here to be your best friend, right? It's here to make the best decisions.
Sometimes answers you're not gonna like.
You may not like me as a person and that's okay. I'm still gonna wave at you and it may bother the hell out of you that I still say hi and we got no argument, but it is what it is. It's about facts and it's about where our community is going. And you can dislike Terry all you want. That's fine. Terry and I don't agree on everything, but I'm still able to be cordial with her. I'm still able to talk business with her and understand and read her long emails, even though they're so long. That's the information that we need to make those. Yeah, they are very thorough.
We've had, we had Terry on here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So for me, and she has a great network and, you know, people are working with her and everyone doesn't do everything wrong, right? I've not done everything right as a commission, you know, not everybody's happy with my decisions I've made. But that still doesn't mean that we are just going after someone's integrity or, or whether or not you like them or not. And so for me, in order to evaluate what Terry's doing, I've asked over since Lane has been serving, what are our goals for KCDC? What are our expectations of KCDC? Then when we lay those out where those are like, duh, big red truck, right?
If you don't have.
We now.
How do you measure metrics?
Exactly. Then we measure what her success is and what her failures are or where she's gone. But if you can't sit down and have those conversations to figure that out because you've got personal issues, well, then we need to go back to the drawing board.
If, if I was your employer and I said, Catricia, I expect this, this and that, if I haven't done that. Then, then how do you meet goals?
Right. And if you don't give them goals and you ask her to come and give an update, her update goes everywhere. Her updates on things that we've lost, things that are in process, things that we're looking into, uh, what property we would wanna turn into industrial park. Then it, you know, other things that she does, you know, um, that she works with the chamber and her group empower her and gets the women together and networking. She does so much. And then it's like, oh, you're losing us, right? And it's like, well, what are we listening to? And we have to make sure like it goes back. Do your research on what we're doing on our agenda. But the first thing after your economic development person gives you a fifteen minute explanation on what she's doing, what has passed in your community, how mu- how many millions of dollars have passed on Frankfurt because we don't have the industrial property? And the only thing you heard out of that particular, um, group, uh, of her conversation was Facebook? Was a bad Facebook post? That's concerning for me. Like, hold on, let's go back three things. Did you see how many millions of dollars we missed out on because we didn't have the land, but you're worried about a Facebook page? So some of those, and I brought that up before, we have to know what's important to us. You know, I don't really care about the Facebook page. I don't care. But I do care about why we're losing so many people because we don't have the land ready.
Or not bringing people.
Yes.
Yeah, like Lawrenceburg, you know, they, um, I posted about the factory that they just put on the hill there. It's a plastics factory. And up in Simpsonville, Simpsonville's population about forty three, you know, it's tiny. Uh, if you drive through Simpsonville, if you blink, you're through it. But yet they got these two massive, the, I think they're go- they're gonna be nickel. I mean, they're gonna be battery plants, but not lithium battery kind of thing. But they've got twenty four loading docks on one of them. And I think there's, there's two of those buildings and maybe three. They are huge, like multiple hundred thousand feet, square feet buildings. And Terry's, Terry said, we've missed out on, I think, if I remember correctly, one point two billion dollars worth of property. Not counting the distilleries, you know, that's a whole different thing, the warehouses, but, um, because we don't have any, we've run out of industrial land. We've got two groups, Vision Franklin County, newly formed dig and Vision Franklin County, well organized. Uh, they're on boards and they're stopping growth. And.
And we're working on our comp plan as well now, right?
Right. But it's overload. It's probably eighty, twenty.
It is.
Environmentalist.
That's what I've heard. I've stopped by a few times and, and listened, but, you know, we really have to know what our growth is. We can't throw out thirty acres and think that Frankfurt's going somewhere because when you look at the list of people that have moved on, they want it thirty or more acres. So if we start with thirty, we've already shot ourselves in the foot because we're not, we're not going anywhere with that.
You know, a hundred acre sized properties. And said, we'd be in, we'd be in the hunt for, with everybody in Kentucky, but our advantage is our location. We got rail. We got two interstates. We're thirty miles from Lexington, forty miles from Louisville and sixty miles from Northern Kentucky. So two, two international airports that fly all over the world, Northern Kentucky and Louisville. And then Lexington flies all over the country. So, um, and our, our airport's upgraded. You see, it's not uncommon to see Lear jets flying in and out here. So, uh, we can get, we can get them in here. We just don't have the land. And I don't know if Terry's hamstrung with that. Um, I don't know what the deal is, but if we want our town to grow, I think the population projection over the next twenty years, two thousand. Population projection over the next twenty years, two thousand people. Where Lawrenceburg's busting at the seams, Georgetown's busting at the seams, Henry County's growing. The only county that's not growing is Owen County. Around us, everybody else is blowing us out of the water, so.
Well, I think that's where residents come into play. You know, we really need some strong residents that really see what Frankfurt could be and what, what a jewel we are. And where we could be in the next five or ten years. And these people are the ones that need to be writing into the mayor and the city commission saying, I wanna be on this board. I wanna be on that board and this is why.
And, you know, and I'm gonna go back, elections have consequences. It comes down, we got to stop voting.
For our friends.
For our friends and the same thing. I mean, I've lived in Frankfurt since ninety-four. There's been very small amounts of changes. You know, and, and even in, you know, even in growth, I mean, yeah, we've built a new Walmart, we've built, you know, a Dick's. Sporting Goods in that area over there, but it's very, very small growth. And in that same period of time, I've watched Lawrenceburg, Danville. Just explode. Maysville.
Corbin built in the convention center, six fifty-five, about the same size as ours. Pike did the same thing.
Well, and it all comes down to leadership that doesn't, and I've said this for, for many years, they don't think big. You gotta think beyond the five, you know, the five-year mark and beyond. You gotta know where you're going, or you'll never get there.
And I think that's one of our issues that a lot of times, we, we wanna look as far as our shadow is, right? You know, what, what's, yeah, and it's like, think further, you know, you may not be city commissioner and mayor forever. So you really do have to think, you don't wanna put, you know, handcuffs or, or parameters on what's going on in twenty, thirty years, sort of like the Capitol Plaza, that. Contract was forever. To me, you should never sign a contract longer than what you're te- technically be expected to serve, right? So you're looking normally, so then another commission can come in and change if need be. Um, so I can't say long contracts, but. I mean, you have to look further than this, your shadow on the ground. And that's not what we're doing. A lot of times we're looking at what's now. And we're still stuck in what's the past, what works, what doesn't work, what's gonna change. Um, and I think that we need to look past that and. We have to start thinking bigger and stop trying, just because we have evaluations that say, oh, well, this is what Frankfurt is now. Okay, this is where we're at now. Do we wanna grow three thousand people? Do we wanna grow five thousand people? What does that look like? And then if what we build now that's so small, will that take care of our growth moving forward? Or is the commission at that time in ten, twenty, thirty years from now, gonna have to go back and like, oh, we gotta expand, we gotta expand? So let's think about that, because a lot of times what Frankfurt builds or what we're pushing forward, we've already outgrown before it's completed. And everyone else is already a step ahead of us.
And something else to think about, you know, you got your tax base. Um, I think the biggest, biggest population section is my age group. You know, fifties and sixties. And as boomers age out. And if we don't get replaced, then the taxes on those remaining are gonna go through the roof. Cause city's gonna get theirs, county's gonna get theirs, cause they've got, they've gotta provide services, gotta have police, gotta have fire.
But we can't wait until, like you said, until you age out and, and are gone. We have to look at the issue now. Even at your age, you're retired, right? And so everyone, most of the people are in that age and our retirement is huge. So when we look like, when we look at the retirement, you're set on a plan, monthly, probably on a monthly budget. So we can bring in all these stores, we can bring in so many things, but when people are looking at it, they're looking at our age breakdown, they're looking at our population breakdown. And they're like, hey, if I bring in a target or I bring in a public service, I bring in whatever, are they gonna be able to keep us open, you know? And so when you look at someone, a, a community that is a lot of retired folks, they live on a budget. So they just don't have money where they can go and spend it ten more, you know, new stores downtown or ten more new stores here. They're on a budget, so we have to bring in those workers that are making that fifty, sixty or higher salary that are raising their families. We need to have housing that wants to bring them in, that want them to stay. We need to gear in on Kentucky State students who, after their college, can we place them in a nice salary position? Give them housing that is attracted to them, you know, for them to stay, to help our numbers grow in that workforce area. So we can help with the, um, you know, the, um, much seasoned generation that are retired.
Right, be- because you're right, they're on a fixed budget. If, if they've got two hundred dollars a month to spend, or expendable income. They're just gonna spread out among more stores. You know, you're not generating more spend, you're just spreading it thinner.
Well, we gotta have young people, gotta have houses, they can afford.
And she brought up KSU, which I think you.
Next, yeah, that's the next one. You know, I've, I've had, um, I think thirteen KSU athletes work at DaVinci's. And all of them, great kids, hundred percent great kids. Uh, a few have wanted open businesses here. Too much red tape, not knowing where to go. You mentioned the one-stop shop earlier. Uh, Dr. Stratton's over the business college and he's teaching business students. But we don't want them to go back to California, Georgia or Tennessee. We want them to stay in open bills, businesses, fill, fill some of these. We're filling most of the, of the space downtown, I think. It's most, it's way better than it was, way better than it was two years ago. But we still got shopping centers that are seventy-five or more percent empty. And these KSU students, bright, smart. They wanna open a business, you know, that's what everybody wants to become an entrepreneur. What are we doing to help those students? And then talk about, cause didn't you graduate from KSU?
I did.
That's what I thought. I mean, I knew that, I was just asking. But, uh, with Dr. Akapo up there, we just completed the new fifty million dollar dorm. Which the students ought to love. Um, artificial turf on the football field. Uh, there's upgrades hopefully going on in the baseball field pretty soon. Talk, talk about KSU and of course, the question we ask everybody, how can we get Frankfurt and K- I think you and I had a phone conversation. How we can get Frankfurt together and Frankfurt KSU to mesh, not, not some sidewalk from the top of the hill down to the bottom. They ain't gonna use, because they're young people. Uh, they're gonna hop in their car and they're gonna go downtown, if we got a reason, which we do now. With all these new, nice new bourbon facilities that are in. Uh, talk about KSU for all that stuff we mentioned and anything else. With the, with the pool and the money you're raising for the pool.
Definitely. Um, well, with KSU, um, you know, our relationship hasn't been great, you know, over the past years, way before me, right? And so it's making a step forward and actually doing what we say we're going to do. And I have to say, I feel like that our relationship with Kentucky State University right now is probably the most positive that it's been in many years. So I think we've made some strides forward. Um, I'm part of the International Town Gown Association. I started that soon as I found out about it. From, um, from Karen and, uh, she brought it to me. I've joined, I've been to all the conferences, I bring things back. One of the ideas I brought back for International Town Gown was the, uh, a gift card idea. Uh, we implemented that during COVID. Also helped out with this, uh, local businesses and it's also helped out the Kentucky State students as well. Um, and so just continuing, um, to build relationships, that's one thing that I can expect them one. Probably at least once a week, I'll have a business or local business or someone call me in the community. Hey, I need to get a hold of someone in Kentucky State, who can I get a hold of? So they call me, you know, and then I'm connecting them with the right people. But then I also follow back up with them to say, hey, did you get the hold of the right person, just to make sure that that connection was made, because there is so much turnover. Um, but with a Dr. Akapo now, you know, I think that he's trying to level out. He is trying to get a balanced budget to show that we can get a balanced budget, but it's really hard to do. When you're looking at a university that needs about thirty-five hundred or more students to help run a university and we're at what, maybe twelve hundred, thirteen hundred? So his goal is to increase, um, increase the population on campus and the students on campus. Um, or just being full-time students, period. And that's another reason why he just signed with, um, KC TC. Um, the other day, the big contract there.
That's great.
Um, you know, of allowing this, those students to come over to Kentucky State once they finish their studies there to pursue maybe a master's or even a doctorate in, um, nursing. Cause we do have that. And so when we're looking at that, that to me is a university that trusts, um, Dr. Akapo, um, in doing that. It's signed, it's gonna be moving in the right direction. To me, not only should that excite Frankfurt because we house Kentucky State University. It should incite us that if these students come straight to Kentucky State, they're going to be working toward a master's or a doctoral in nursing. So now that we're on a professional level of getting your, you already got your degree, now you're getting a higher level degree and now you're working with students. Who can go right into your business and be full-time employees, um, have the state-of-the-art, you know, opportunities for them to, for interns, things. We have it right here. And we just have to make sure that we're using them appropriately and giving those opportunities. And like you said, are we doing anything as far as the entrepreneurship per se with the city? We're always looking for opportunities to, um, to help out in whatever ways that we can. Um, that's another thing that we're looking to, cause I think that Frankfurt Independent Schools really focus on that, uh, in their areas with the high schoolers. And I think that that's another area to be able to include them. And I think more in the entrepreneurship takes place in the agriculture area with Dr. Pomper and them. Over in there, and they do cover a lot of space. So I think that there's opportunities out there. I think a lot of our banks, Whittaker Bank, um, Expre. Some of those banks are going into Kentucky State and trying to pull in students, whether that's for internships or jobs, to get them into the community. So I feel like it's, it's getting there. And we're spending, uh, you know, Tishade, I spoke to her when she came in as, um. As the, uh, CEO of the Frankfurt Chamber, you know, of getting Kentucky State there and getting her connected. She's done a great job in upkeeping her relationship with them and keeping things positive. She continues to host, um, luncheons in the president's dining hall. She just, I think, a couple of weeks ago, where we can, um, you know, eat on Kentucky State's campus and understand the students and communicate with them. Um, I know my relationship's a bit different with students, cause I was a graduate there. I've taught there as well. I coached there, I played sports there. Um, and so just connecting and seeing that Kentucky State is more than the negatives that are out there. Kentucky State is a beautiful school. It was built with a purpose and that purpose is still thriving. We just need to get more people.
There are only Langgrin besides UK.
It is.
Is Kentucky one of the few states that's got two Langgrin universities? And, uh, see, uh. The, 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 um, well, I've, I've made friends with one of the board members who happens to be Frankfurt High's coach.
Okay, um, yes, Jason.
Jason, yeah. And so we talk all the time. I'm gonna see if I can get Ja- you know, Jason, I've talked to Jason about coming on here. And so we got a KSU regent that's our Frankfurt High basketball coach. So, and I talk to him about once a week and, um, talked to him today. And that's a tie. You know, uh, and who's his wife work for? Just, just as a side note, as a UK fan, his wife is John Calipari's right-hand person. Which, do you know that?
I did not know.
Yeah, has been for, so he li- uh, first thing I asked him, I said, dude, when you moving to Frankfurt? He goes, let me tell you. We gotta stay in Lexington. I said, I understand, you know, but that's one bridge. And then, um. I think Dr. Pomper lives in Frankfurt, uh, Gary Stratton lives in Frankfurt. But if we could, if we could encourage, I just wish we could do more events for the students. A downtown thing for KSU students to give them a reason to stay here, cause with thirteen hundred students and Dr. Pomper, I mean, Dr. Akapu. Hopefully hitting his goal of three thousand in three years, that's an economic driver for this town. Like Center is for Danville, uh, Campbellsville, those are economic engines for those schools. But we don't use KSU and we don't, we don't give the students a reason to spend their money here.
And that's why the, that's why these, um, the, the success of masters and doctorate programs are important, because you bring in quality students. And, and I think that, that's a key, uh, for Frankfurt, because a lot of them work. And, or need jobs to subsidize, and that's how, you know, all these job openings that we have, because we don't have, you know, we've got a university. We should be like Lexington on a smaller level that there are plenty of young people out here.
Working everywhere.
Wanting to work everywhere. And that, you know, that's even, you know, before the, um. Entrepreneurial shift and graduation, that's another place where, uh, case take should be. Highly embraced in a, in a great asset to the community for people like Craig, who's got a small business that rely on. You know, I don't need a master's degree to work, you know, to work a lot of these jobs. You know, they're just looking to subsidize income. Uh, so it's really, really exciting.
They all, all thirteen of them got their degrees. And one of them's a nurse at our hospital, but the others took their degrees. And I still talk to them, there's two in California. We had a young lady that, um, played first base for the women's softball team from Hawaii. And the KSU girls softball team had two players from Hawaii.
And that's where I'm excited about the new, the new president. We're already seeing, you know, the, the, the community at large may or may not know, but we're already seeing a lot of changes. He's a no-nonsense guy.
He is.
There, you know, all the, all the bad stuff that we've heard about UK. Forget it, forget it, because this guy, no nonsense, no BS. If it can, if it's discovered, it will be stopped. Uh, and, and I think we're, we're headed in a very, very positive and good direction.
Well, uh, the pool. Frankfurt doesn't have a pool. You've been working on a project, I, I don't know if you've been spearheading it or not, but you're the, you're the person I see out front with this. The pool has needed some work. So can you tell us about what you've done with the pool? How much money y'all have raised so far and the goals and all that stuff?
Yeah, so our goal, um, the goal was, you know, to look into Exum as a partnership with YMCA and trying to redo the pool. The pool was our main focus. Um, so, you know, as time went on, you know, we made a committee, um, and I felt like. People were sort of pushing the community people out of that committee. Um, and so that sort of bothered me because the community really wants a pool. They're willing to help raise the funds, they just need to know what's going on so they can start raising funds. And I felt like that they were not being communicated with. So then I started talking to Barry Pope about it, um, and just people feeling like they were being left out. And I said, okay, I'm gonna be the conduit to keep you guys together. I'm on this committee, so we'll be the conduit. Well, then, uh, things move forward. I was like, well, we just need to sort of raise money. Just to fix KSU, not argue with the city, not argue with the county, just fix the pool so we can have a pool, cause it, it has good bones, right? And you guys know, a pool is expensive and it takes a while to do, so this is gonna be the quickest way for us to get something done. And so, um, Jamal Jackson, the basketball coach at Kentucky State, he and I went to college together.
Oh, you did?
Yes, so we went to college together and he called and said that he had met someone by the name of Sam Taylor, who, um, was interested. He's a swimmer. Avid swimmer, swam in college, uh, still used the pool when the YMCA had opened it for the little bit of time before it closed down. And he was interested in helping out with something with the pool. And I was like, sure, send him my way, we'll chat and see how we can all connect. And Sam and I started tack, uh, started talking and we started connecting and, and just really positive about the pool. And we were like, hey, let's start a group. Let's start a committee with just us. And so we did, we started a group, uh, and, uh, ended up forming, um, Swim With Purpose is what we're called. Um, and literally it's just based on trying to save and put swimming at the hands of our community KSU students. Um, our athletes and our more seasoned individuals who does, who, who do more. Stop saying that. Seasoned folks who want to do aerobics in water, which is, uh, easier on their bones and muscles. Than it would be to walk on a treadmill or being in the gym every day. And so once we talked, we started getting together, cooperating, we made our board and we all. Co-founded Swim With Purpose. Uh, we have a website up at swimwithpurpose.org. So you can go there and you can see how much money we've raised. I know we were pushing right at three hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, I think that, uh, Sam Taylor has done a lot of that, um, through business. Uh, we also have, uh, Nick Belvora, I think is how you pronounce his last name. I'm not sure, sorry, Nick. Uh, Barry Pope is also on there, Pop is on there. Uh, he's actually a board member and Jamal Jackson is also one of our board members with Sam. And so. We, to be a pretty good group of people who are focused on making sure that our board was diverse. Our board has, uh, swimmers, people who enjoy swimming, uh, Barry, his, uh, I believe it's his daughter, she's a swimmer. He's the connection to like. Uh, yes, I believe, yeah, she did swim, um, I think for Frankfurt.
The Buffalo Trace Pool. Sell the naming rights.
I'm not saying that it couldn't be, you never know.
Because swimmers are hungry when they're done.
Yeah, they could wanna slice a pizza. But you know what, I will give it to him. He did donate pizza for our swim party that happened at Juniper Hills where we did a fundraiser. And so Craig was one of our businesses that donated, uh, pizza for us to sell and all that money did go back to Swim With Purpose. So I appreciate you stepping up and doing that. We did a fifty-fifty split at the Franklin County Western Hills game the other day and had our backdrop out, just letting people know what we're doing. And so, you know, that's not the only avenue that we're doing. That's just the group that I help with, um, and that we've sort of spearheaded. You guys can donate anytime at swimwithpurpose.org. Uh, if your company wants to do a huge donation or something larger, cause it's the end of the year, you need tax write-off. Please give me a call, I'll connect you with Sam, who is our chair, I'm the co-chair of that.
Phone number, man?
My phone, um. Send me an email, send me an email, how about that? Um, you can reach me there and then I'll connect you with Sam, uh, because he is our chair. And then, um, make any donations that you would like to give at the end of the year. And that can be personal, it can be business, it can be anything. All of our, and for, all of our, um, business is ran through the Bluegrass Foundation, so everything is a tax write-off because we put all of our money into there. If our money, our money stays there until the pool is where we want it to be and we continue, we wanna start a foundation with that. So we do wanna start that. So we do wanna start that where money will continue to go into the pool and help the upkeep because it's so expensive. If at any time that Swim With Purpose was to dissolve, we have it set up in our bylaws that the money will then be transferred over. Um, into the city as a line item for pools and continue to regenerate, regenerate money for pools in that. So either way, the money will stay in the pools, whether that's community pools or the KSU pool. But our goal is to get that pool up and going. We are now waiting on update on what that, what that cost is gonna be. And then we can see what we can do is swim with purpose, but also what the city portion and the county portion will be to try to get this pool up. Will look like with Dr. Akapo and, you know, how much time will the community get to use the pool? How much time does Kentucky State get to use the pool? What days are that? Swim meets, things like that. So we really have to sit down with Dr. Akapo to make sure that it matches and it's a good partnership with Kentucky State and when we get to use and how much we get to use.
So the city and the county haven't kicked up to swim with a purpose yet?
Yes, they are, they are uh, very aware of Swim With Purpose.
If they haven't set a dollar amount, you know, like y'all gave a million dollars each or more to the Humane Society?
Right, so the talk was at the very beginning that the city would put a million dollars toward the pool at Kentucky State University. We asked for the county to do the same. And I think Mueller in his court has said yes to that. However, I think moving forward, we wanna make sure what that money is going to and how we benefit from that. So, uh, Dr. Akapo is willing to sit down with us. He's very supportive of Swim With Purpose. He's very supportive in this relationship of getting the pool. He knows how important that is for our community, um, on so many levels. And he, he's willing to sit down and have the uh, conversation to sit down to look at a MOU and what that usage time looks like for the city and county. Once we get that, I think that that then becomes what dollar amount the city or the county will be able to go to.
We're gonna, we're gonna brief up here a little bit.
Let's skip the next two. Let's skip the next two and go to the last one.
The last one? Okay, uh, I'll, I'll hit the next one for me right as we're closing out.
Which one? The top one?
The, the mayor.
Let's go to the old Y.
The old Y. Yeah, that's been a, that's been kind of a, a popular topic too, is the old YMCA. We've seen, you've probably seen the drone footage of trees growing up and. The, the pictures and everything of that. I never knew where that was where the old Y was until that drone footage come out. I've lived here since ninety-four and I've never knew.
I asked the friend, again, you know, if you know, if you know people. They'll go do it because I, I first.
Well, drunk guys are always looking for a reason to fly anyway.
And I, my first saw it on Google Earth.
But where are we on this rehab and demolition? I've heard multiple different law, yeah, heard all kinds of things.
We can't really say a whole lot about it. We are still in legal issues with the Grays. And the Grays are the owners of the building who are the mother-in-law, father-in-law to Lane Wilkerson, who is our mayor. So he doesn't have a whole lot to say on that because it's a conflict of interest. Um, I'd ask for this actually to come back to our table before Lane became mayor. Because it was gonna be a conflict of interest. And then after he became mayor, it was like sort of, let's not put it out there. And so I've asked for several times for it to come back and get an update on it because it is an eyesore, you know? Um, and I really want something to happen to that building. I'd rather not knock it down. If a developer sees fit that they could come in and turn it into something that brings money into our, you know, community and we save a great building, awesome. But um, I think the last time we looked, it was gonna cost us about a million dollars, I think, to demo that if we were to get that piece of property. But right now, it's still in legal issues with the Grays and there's not a lot that we can say on that. Um, in regards to that, um, me personally, I'm not okay uh, being in legal issues uh, with them. Especially when I think you bought it for what, a dollar or was given it for a dollar? And we see what it looks like, but yet they had a whole lot to say about Peaks Mill and, and Buffalo Trace putting barns over in the Peaks Mill area. But you had a whole lot to say about that, but you didn't say anything about your building that's about to fall in the river. That makes our downtown look not great in that area, especially with second street.
Fencing around if you remember.
There was because at one time we thought that there was things falling from the top, so we had to put that there to keep people off, to make sure there wasn't. And then when we got the contractors in to go in and do an evaluation, they did deem it that it was still safe. We did take down the um, the gates because we were renting them as the city. So we took those down. And so that's sort of where we are, you know, everyone looks at it. It could be a great building. And, you know, and they did present us with, um, they presented us with blueprint looking document, not even blueprints, let me not go there. They re- give us a printout of what they foresee that they could put there, which was a boutique hotel. With some mixed space, you know, like little boutiques, I guess, in there and then like rooms for hotels. And it looked okay. I mean, it just looked like it really came off of can, but it didn't look like anything serious. It did. So when you look at that, how much money does that take, right? I, I wouldn't wanna take over that and pin, and spend a million dollars to knock it down. I would not.
Right, yeah. And how many millions does it take to, to, you know, renew it, regenerate it?
Number one thing, it's on the wrong side of the floodbowl.
It really is. So, it's really hard. It'd probably be hard to get any other insurance on it and. It, it just takes a whole lot in consideration, but it, something does need to happen to it and we're gonna wait for an update from our attorney, Laura Ross. Now, I wouldn't be surprised if it's in the next meeting or two to have an update on that, but it'll probably be in closed session because it's legal matters.
Cause somebody had said, uh, and I don't remember if it was somebody we were talking to, that, that, that building is tied into. The Singing Bridge Foundation. Like, you can't just go and, you know, take a wrecking ball and tear that building down because your structural integrity involved between the two structures.
Well, when you're really looking at it and, and you know how old it is and then how, you know, everything's happened and it's right there on the river. So even if it does get demolished, you know, you have to, it's gonna cost a lot because you cannot let that fall into the river. Because asbestos and everything else that's inside that building. And then when you look at a hot day, you know, for me, it would have been a concern from the school with the schoolchildren playing right there on, uh. On the, the playground area there and on a hot day, asbestos heating up and wind blowing and rain and everything else, that just to me goes over on that park.
You got rocks, you got trees growing outside the cliffs. Okay, you got a tree, you, now, what's harder? Solid rock that a tree can, its roots will bust it up or a tree growing inside the old Y? I mean, it'd be easy to take out some brick if you're tree roots, I guess, because, you know, it's plain in one of those pictures I took that. You know, the, the wind is covered with tree leaves. Big, you know, so.
And over the years since I've served, you know, I know that um, Eric Westman at one time when he was on the board said that he had developer after developer who was interested in it. Nothing came to fruition. And it's like, stop playing games. Let's make a decision on what we, what we can do, get through this legal battle. And hold them accountable to do whatever comes out of the legal battle, you know, to move this forward. But I'm willing to work with them. I'm, I think the city's willing to work with them. But what I'm just not okay with is you got it for a dollar and how dare you look at, you know, for the positive. A positive vibe with the city that you want us to buy it from you. Like I remember one time in a meeting with, um. And I'm like, get out of here. Like, you can't, if you want the best for your city, want the best for your city. But don't look at the bottom line that you're, you've got that piece of property because you knew in twenty, thirty years, you were gonna make sure that as an attorney, that you were gonna be in a legal issue. And so that's for me. So, you know, I'm across the line. I just want the best for Frankfurt. I wanna be able to work with the Grays. And work with uh, our attorney Ross on whatever legality that we have to, to get through this. But to me, I've been serving for five years and it's been happening way before me and I think it's time that we do something now.
And there's a lawsuit, so is it, uh, I guess it's under circuit court, right? I guess.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, okay, so. That, that's good.
Well, um, one last question on our way out. If uh, if you win the mayor's election, are you gonna encourage a strong mayor and form of government or the vote for that? You're gonna encourage that to be put on the ballot? So that the citizens can have their, their say which way they want to go?
Um, well, the, the only way that I would do that is I didn't see increase or movement in, in a great direction. Um, right now, you know, I really, I really do support the two city managers that are in the right uh, place at the right time. And I, I, I can't say that I would do that because it's not about me being a full-time mayor or a mayor form of government. It's about doing what's right for Frankfurt and moving them in the right direction. And for people to see what um, what Frankfurt has to offer and go get it, right? So for me, over the next year, I'm really wanting to work really closely with Jason and Andrew to see how they can work together to move us forward. If they can move us forward, what is a mayor form of government? The goal is that we've been in the city manager ran government for a while. It hasn't worked out is because the mayor and the city commissioners don't know their place and don't understand their job titles. So maybe if we took time to get to know what our job title is and read over it, we wouldn't have problems with all of our city managers. Because a lot of it comes down to personal issues. Literally, we are a board of five people. Our goal is policy and our goal is to make sure that we have a, a, a solid budget. To make sure we spend the taxpayers' dollars in a right manner and give them what they want and be able to move this town forward. I'm not here to control anybody. I'm not here to get a pat on my back. I'm here because you have elected me to be commissioner and you've elected the others to be commissioner and mayor. And that is what we're here to do, not to boss around our staff who are very educated and smart in what they're doing. Making their life hell, you said I could curse, making their life hell because we wanna control something personally. If we could just get out of our own ways and stop worrying about the power, I feel like we could have some really good city managers. Keith Parker was a really good city manager and he left because of personal issues. Because a mayor felt like that he wasn't telling him everything and that he felt out of the loop and then he got cut because everyone didn't like it.
What about the lady that followed him? That, that um, I understand she was very well-liked also and. I can't, I don't, she wasn't here long enough to even know. She took the job up in Minnesota?
Uh, Cindy Steinhouser? And it's the same thing. It's personal.
Well, I, I think, and we've seen this multiple times through thirteen commis- uh, city managers.
Seventeen. No, you're right. Twelve and seventeen years.
Uh, with a lot of them, is, I think they forget who is actually. Running the city. Who, who is, that is the title of the city manager. Literally, that's their job, not the mayor, not the commission. And.
We set policy, we look at budget, we say, hey, this is what we're wanting. Go out and do it. That's why we have directors. That's why we have city managers. They go out and do it. We, the city commission and the mayor get in the way of staff and doing their jobs a lot of times. And we make it harder for them because it's a controlling mechanism. There's many times to me that I think the mayor has overstepped his boundaries as mayor. And, you know, can, you know, and been to me rude or disrespectful to some staff. And that is not okay.
Sometimes publicly on, on meetings, but we won't, we won't get into all that.
But, you know, for me, uh, back to your question of, you know, would I, I would not push a mayor form of government.
At this time?
At this time, if, even if I were to become mayor, only because it's not about me. It's about giving Frankfurt a different perspective in a new direction. And to me, right now, since it was taken off of the um, the option with the mayor Lisa and Kelly. I think that two city managers gives Frankfurt a different direction. So let's try this direction. Let's see if it's successful. And if maybe in my second or third year, we still don't see that that, then maybe that's something we can then entertain to say, yes, let's try to put it out there.
It would be at least two years before there was an election that you could put it on the ballot, right?
So it's nothing to run to because it's not about wanting power. It's not, it's about doing something different. So I was in supportive of it, of it at the time because we're city manager ran government. And why not try it right now when we just lost another city manager? But we also have to do better at hiring these individuals that come in. I don't need to hire you because I know you. I don't need to hire you because I know your uncles, uncles, uncles. We need to hire who is educated, who is ready to perform the duties of a city manager is what we need to do. And I think we have two great people that are going to be able to do that. And I've had a meeting with both of them and I told them the same thing here. You have to be a strong city manager. You can't be bullied by the mayor. You can't be bullied by the city commission. You cannot let us overstep our boundaries. Let us know where our boundaries are. You set your boundaries and lead the city in the direction goes. We switch out every two years, mayor every four years. So it shouldn't evolve around us. We're just the people to try to get it moving in the right direction. You go focus and you go do it. Tell us to be where we're supposed to be and be the city commissioners that we're supposed to be and the mayor we're supposed to be and not let us overstep those boundaries.
Right, and there, I mean, there's policies to refer to, there, there, there's, you know, there's all kinds of document, there's all kinds of paperwork. And as I've always said, if you follow the rulebook and read it, you'll never be wrong. You know, you might not be liked. But you eliminate a lot of problems in your life. And I think you're right. They need to be strong enough to say, sorry, Mary, it's not your job. Says, that's my job, not yours.
And we have to respect that as officials. And, you know, I know there's times that, and I absolutely love the staff and I've been here the longest with them. And I have a lot of respect with them, um, you know, and if anyone ever feels that I've overstepped anything, I, let, let's talk about it, you know? And let's, and let's do that. But I try not to do that because I do know my place. But I also want a good working relationship with the staff because I do like to get information. If I don't know sewers, I've, I've had several meetings with Kenny and he's able to sit down to me and explain it. Now I understand it. I see in the direction our sewer's going and other places. And, and it's because I want that knowledge. But not because I want to control him or anyone else or, or what have you. That's not it at all. And so I think that's been the downfall of our city manager ran government not working. Because we've not allowed the city manager, because we've had mayors and city commissioners want to be in a council forum. And I mean, I think a mayor form of government would be good for Frankfurt. I do. And that's why I said I would, I would, I, if it was put on the ballot, I would vote for it. Because it allows, it allows us to go into districts, as you guys saw, um, I think Kyle had pinned something out. We have so many different dri- districts. That also allows different people from different districts to be heard. Sort of like right now, the issue over in um, uh, Silver Lake and, and that area, they have a lot of um. Traffic issues, right? None of us live over in that area. Right? So we all live downtown or on the west side. So no one lives in that area. So we have to go back with Richard Wilson and the people that live in that community and say, hey, what's going on? I can speak about Collins Lane traffic, right? Cause I live in that area. But it would be good if we went into that to make a strong mayor government with strong districts. Because now you know who your person is within a, a, a space frame of knowing what district that person is. And it gives us, it just gives us an opportunity to have the whole entire county covered versus four people trying, and a mayor trying to cover the entire city. So to me, it would help you as residents contact someone that is in your neighborhood or within driving distance there to know your neighborhood and what happens every day.
If it doesn't work out, you know, if the fire, the, uh, by the way, the fire chief said he would come on. That's gonna be our city manager, I think, January thirty. Twenty twenty-four is when he takes, takes over. But, uh, and he said he'd come on, so, um.
We just have to do better at picking city managers or interview process for folks, period. We do.
Well, and, and we need a mayor, um. Or, or enough city commissioners that will speak up and say, know your place. Know your place at the table and this isn't it.
You know, when Laura came in, uh, I did not vote for Laura, but when Laura came in for city commissioner, you know.
You're the only one that didn't, if I remember.
I am the only one that did not. But uh, when she came in, you know, she was wanting to do things and she was telling, you know, the staff not to speak with us, you know, unless she knew and all of these things. And I was a little offended by it first because I'm really good, I feel like I have really good working relationship with the directors and staff. And I can talk to them or call them and say, hey, what's going on with this pothole or whatever? So I did start changing. I was like, okay, I would start adding her on my emails or I would call her first. And so I started doing things like that. But then when you stop keeping information from me, why do you want me to communicate with you if you're not communicating with me? But at the time, we put our situ- we put ourselves in a situation of hiring someone who literally said in their interview that she was not a city manager. Nor did she know city government. So that is a concern. You just can't hire someone and just want them to be because you know them or you want them to be because you want control. You can't do that. You have to put people in who knows what they're doing and who's ready to move us forward. And I think we got the best of both worlds with Jason and Andrew.
If everything was functioning properly as it should, uh, with proper policies being followed. Then maybe you could put someone in there that had a good background, but maybe not direct experience. But you, you're right, you need somebody right now that's strong, ready, experienced. And who don't, more importantly, and this is where I'm excited about the Georgetown guy. It's not necessarily tied to Frankfurt. I don't, I don't care what your last name is. This is how this is supposed to run according to, to, to the legislation or uh, policies and ordinances that you've passed. So until this changes, this is how we're doing it.
And you have to realize, we have so much going on in Frankfurt right now. Projects, projects coming up. We've got everything. We have our budget that we continue to spend, 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 but we, yet we have a budget, but we don't have a five-year projection. Who do, who does that in the city, right? So now you've got two people coming in, a city manager, like what the heck? So we're gonna have to pump the brakes on some things. We're gonna have to step back and let the city managers, as I stated, we need a strategic planning group with them. How do you wanna reconstruct? Is there things that we can reconstruct? Is there things that we can mesh together? You know, what can we do to make sure Frankfurt is on a good foot footing for these two city managers to move forward and work together? And move us in the right direction and cover all the space that we need to in our city government?
Well, one thing, you know, uh, we'll talk about this, you know, next time we have you on. But uh, Frankfurt's got a homeless problem. And it's only getting worse every day and we're coming up on winter. Um, I watched um, uh, Northern City, their homeless and their migrants. um, have exploded and they don't know what they're gonna do this winter. So they're afraid people are gonna freeze out in these parks or on the sidewalks or whatever, because there's so many people that they
Yeah.
Literally don't have, they're sleeping in police stations every night. So hopefully we don't get that bad, but it's something that's gonna have to be addressed.
Yeah, it's, it's a bigger problem. It is, it's a growing problem. And you know, we don't, we say we don't want it to get that bad, but to me, where we're at now is pretty bad.
Yeah.
Um, just one person living out on our streets is, is bad for me. And I, you know, I don't, we don't have an answer for it. I think we've tried many things. I think we're still trying to look in other things. Um, but it's just, we really don't. I know that I've talked to other people at KLC meetings, um, you know, some other communities. Um, they took an old hotel that was empty and, and made it into a workable space and a living space for the homeless. Um, some were going to outlaw homelessness in their city. You know, it's like, hey, if you're here, you gotta work and you're gonna be into the, and this is where you live and you're working in order to stay here. If not, you've gotta go.
You know what the mayor of New York is doing? He put it out last week for their migrants, cause they've got a hundred and thirty thousand migrants up there and they got nowhere to keep them, offered them a plane ticket anywhere on planet earth, one way.
Wow.
To, you know, probably to fly them back to their home country. But uh, it's that bad in New York and they don't know what they're gonna do. Chicago's in the same way. San Francisco, the same way. They, except it won't, you know, don't get freezing cold in San Francisco.
Yeah.
But the, they're worried they're gonna have people die on the streets this winter.
I mean, it's a national, I mean, it's a national um, horrible issue that no one can really figure out. Um, you know, I, I know I spoke with someone in regards to Louisville and Derby, when Derby happens. When you go up there for Derby, you don't see any homeless people in Louisville. They move them out. And if you can do it during Derby, you can do it any other time. And I know it does take money to do it, but it makes you look better as a city. But at the same time, when you have all these millionaires coming in to spend money on horses and spend money in your community, maybe if they thought and knew that you had a homeless problem, maybe they'd help you solve it.
Yeah.
Right? But if you don't see it, you don't think that it's a problem. So you're moving them out for what, a week? A big weekend to get them out of here and then they're right back. Whatever that looks like, a Happy Meal and fifty dollars. So it's something that is ongoing, but I, I, I want, a lot of it is mental uh, issues.
Correct.
And that's really hard for us as a city to go because you can't force anyone to get help. You can't force anyone to take our services. You know, my goal is to help them in a mental issue, uh, with their mental issues, but also trying to get them back on their feet with a job so they can provide and be part of the culture and a part of our community again. And uh, be self-sustaining again, you know? Sometimes it just takes a, a bad divorce or, you know, something bad to happen in your life. And we don't know those stories.
Forty percent of Americans are living paycheck to paycheck. They're one paycheck away from being homeless.
Exactly.
I don't know if it's true or not, but it's sure said on the federal level a lot, for shock value maybe, I don't know.
Right.
Definitely.
Right. So it's, this has been a great.
Great discussion.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And um, always ask, you know, we've already done our breaking news thing, you announced that you're gonna be running for mayor of Frankfurt.
I am gonna run for mayor.
Twenty twenty-four. And um, you'd be willing to come back later on?
Sure.
We'll, we'll, we could talk politics. We could talk to the mayor's race.
Yeah, sure.
Do that and uh, anything else you wanna talk about, but uh, we'll holler back at you.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you guys so much. I enjoyed myself.
If you have any, you know, you know, breaking news or wanna platform to, to, to get some word out there, let us know. Uh, if nothing else, you know, we can give you, you know, five or ten minutes at the beginning of the show or at the end of the show to, to, to make a public announcement and
Yeah, that'd be great. I'd love to swing back around and see when Sam Taylor is gonna be in the state. So when Sam comes back into Frankford to visit for Swim With Purpose, I would love to invite him back on and be able to speak on Swim With Purpose, just to get it out there so more, more people know about it and do that.
We got a couple of things that are coming up.
We've had ten or twelve people follow us all the way through this two-hour deal, but we'll get a thousand or twelve hundred views.
Well, thank you for everyone that was out there watching. For those that ask questions, if you have other questions, drop them hopefully in there. I'll follow along and see if I can answer a few for the days to come. But thank you guys for the invite. I, I enjoy it. I try to be as transparent as I can and upfront as I can. Again, like I said, I'm not speaking on behalf of the commission. I, this is my opinion, my seat that I sit in and uh, Catrice's opinions and her thoughts and
You might not like the answer, but
May not like it.
But they're gonna be truthful and
They're gonna be truthful in how I feel and if I can speak on it, I will. And you may not like my decision today, but maybe I'll get you on the next one. But know that it's the best thing for Frankford.